Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,688th meeting of council held on 16 August 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, no public participant today, so we move to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week we saw the Greens councillor for the GABA provide tactical advice to people advising them how to break, enter and occupy a property they don't own. Do you think this is a responsible approach to addressing housing supply?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Hutton, and it is a very serious issue and one that you're right to ask a question about. What I think happened last week was, I think, a turning point for the Greens in Queensland because we know that the vast majority of people who vote Green do so for environmental reasons. And many of those people are not aware of the extremist and, in fact, dangerous policy positions that are espoused by Greens councillors and MPs. And last week, we saw people starting to realise exactly what it means when you vote Green. Because it is very different than espousing a care for the environment or pro-environmental policies to encouraging people to actively break the law, which is what we saw last week. Now, this is not the first time that the councillor for the GABA ward, the Greens councillor, has encouraged people to break into homes. But this time, it was different. This time, the message was calculated, it was supported by raw data, and also tactics for scoping out a property, encouraging people to enter a property they do not own, scope it out, including things like peering in windows, taping the doors, and even getting the electricity connected in a property you don't own. Now, in April 2016, we saw the Greens councillor encourage residents to break the law to prevent the construction of the West Village, and in fact, a development which is loved right across Brisbane and has provided homes for many, many people. In November 2018, he advocated to residents to vandalise bus shelters, going to say as far as 'I wish it happened more often'. That was his quote. Since 2017, on three separate occasions now, he has advocated for people to break into homes they don't own and occupy them. And this latest how-to guide has been widely condemned in the community and by the media for good reason. The councillor provided advice on, once you get inside, you can connect the electricity by calling the power company and using a fake name and telling them, 'I've just moved into this house'. I don't know how many laws councillor Sri Ranganathan wants to break or encourage people to break, but the list is growing by the day. This behaviour is deceitful, it is morally wrong, and I think we should have taken him seriously when he claimed, in his own words, that he considers himself to be more of an anarchist than a socialist. This is dangerous stuff, it is law-breaking. And even last night, according to his own live Facebook stream, he organised a Greens Party protest in King George Square where he encouraged people to vandalise CCTV cameras. His exact quote was, 'I for one would argue that it's very ethical and, in fact, responsible of us, if we can get away with it, to vandalise security cameras.' This is an elected representative we are talking about here. This is someone who has a responsibility to the people that he represents, but also a responsibility that comes with elected office, to encourage people to do the right thing, to do the responsible thing, to be good citizens, not to encourage people to break the law. Now, it is fair and reasonable to put forward suggestions to deal with the housing crisis. There is a good debate that needs to be had, but going straight to breaking the law is not the right way to approach a debate. I didn't hear him jump in line and support the opening up of a thousand beds near the Brisbane Airport. We really didn't seem to care about that proposal, but he's quite happy to encourage people to break into other people's homes and occupy them illegally. This is also a council that we know has form. In the past, he's been actively supporting Extinction Rebellion, people using lock-on devices, gluing themselves to roads, and disrupting the daily lives of hundreds of thousands of Brisbane residents. I really do wonder what his elected Greens Party representatives, his colleagues, think about what he has said, because they have been really, really quiet. I wonder what Michael Berkman thinks about this. I wonder what Amy McMahon thinks about this. I wonder what Max Chandler-Mather thinks about this, or Elizabeth Watson-Brown, or Bates, what's his name, Stephen Bates thinks about this. Because they have gone to ground-
Lord Mayor, your time-
-and I need to hear them rule this out.
...has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. This weekend, it's been six months since the February 2020 floods, and council has not identified a single road in need of resurfacing despite Tennyson Ward suburbs like Oxley and Fairfield and seven others suffering catastrophic flood damage. Nor, after six months, has council finished even identifying flood-damaged roads. Why not?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The basis of this question is clearly incorrect. Council has a very long list of roads that have been identified, and in fact, they are listed in the budget. All you have to do, councillor Johnston, is to read the budget document. There's two lists for road resurfacing. One is for general road resurfacing, one is for flood recovery, it is all there in the budget.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
The Lord Mayor is clearly unaware. I asked a question on notice about this, and the list of flood-damaged road is a matter of public record. It does not include any Tennyson Ward streets, and it specifically says in council's answer that not all roads have been identified-
You're now debating the point of order.
The Lord Mayor is a liar yet again.
Councillor Johnston, please. Lord Mayor, do you want to add to the answer? Okay, councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question this afternoon is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shrinna Council's fast-track green bridges are now well underway. Could you please provide the chamber with an update on what we expect to see in the coming months on both of these projects, please?
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair, and thank you to councillor Owen for the question. There is just so much happening with green bridges in Brisbane. Firstly, it's great to see the Shrinna Council's green bridges programme being acknowledged at a national level. Just last month, we saw Infrastructure Australia add our green bridge building programme to their priority list, which is fantastic news, and it's the first active transport project to be supported at a national level. So that is a real achievement, a real jewel in the crown for Brisbane City Council. Infrastructure Australia, of course, backed the Brisbane Metro project several years ago, and this has now led to $600 million in state and federal funding. The listing as a nationally significant infrastructure project means we hope this will lead to more investment by other levels of government, the state and the federal government, in active transport projects as we go forward. Mr Chair, as you'd know, there's a lot happening with the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, a project that complements and extends the ever-popular Loris Bonney River Walk. We're already been very busy with site establishment and initial roadworks along Newstead Avenue, Newstead Terrace, and the Breakfast Creek Road in June and July, but it was great to be down there with you last week as marine work and piling work commenced in Breakfast Creek. When we talk about marine works, what will Brisbane residents see happening actually out at Breakfast Creek? Well, marine works will be required to construct the foundations of the new green bridge and the new Loris Bonney River Walk extension, and will include major construction activities such as piling and concreting. It is literally the foundation of the project that will be built in the Brisbane River and in Breakfast Creek. And for those barge nuts out there, we already have a large pontoon with an excavator working in Breakfast Creek. This barge will be positioned in various locations along Breakfast Creek between the existing Breakfast Creek Road Bridge and the mouth of the creek for approximately 12 months. A smaller supply barge will be transported to the site via the Brisbane River in September this year. This barge will be positioned near the northern embankment where Breakfast Creek meets the Brisbane River. All of this work will deliver a stunning architecturally-designed arch bridge with an 80-metre span and a 175-metre River Walk extension that is due to open in 2024. Mr Chair, I also can't give a green bridges update without talking about our magnificent Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. It's all steam ahead with this bridge, Chair. There's so many things happening on this project. I was very privileged to join with representatives from Besik's Watpak and the Connect Brisbane team, along with councillor Wines, the infrastructure chair, for a welcome to country and smoking ceremony by First Nations traditional owners. Last month, we heard the haunting and evocative tones of Maruchi Baramba, and Auntie Kath was there. That was a brilliant welcome to country, and as I always do when I hear Maruchi Baramba sing, I just want to acknowledge the great work that she and other elders all around Brisbane do for our First Nations people. And I thought, what a great touch it was, Chair, to open an infrastructure project construction in this way. It's not something that traditionally we have done in this city, but I think we're going to see more and more of it, and I really want to support Besik's Watpak for the fantastic engagement that they did with First Nations to get that done. Mr Chair, we've also progressed the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge restaurant and cafe. The EOI process ran through June and attracted many, many proponents. This is a testament to the iconic landmark that we are creating here, and I think it shows the enthusiasm that restaurateurs have for our river, this active transport bridge, and the role that it will play in the 2032 Brisbane Olympic and Paralympic Games. For councillors who don't know, there'll be two spaces as part of the bridge. The larger of the two facilities will be an elevator above the bridge deck on the approach to the city landing, which will afford panoramic views of the CBD, the Brisbane River, the Story Bridge, the Kangaroo Point cliffs, and the city Botanic Gardens. This space of approximately 380 square metres will take advantage of the city's outdoor lifestyle in combination of indoor and al fresco seating. The smaller, approximately 90-metre squared space will be located at the city landing urban plaza, which is created where Edward Street and Alice Street meet at the Brisbane, at the corner of the city Botanic Gardens, and we're looking forward to seeing this tender package progress. Finally, Mr Chair, barges are back on the river at Kangaroo Point. Marine piling work has resumed, and we will be continuing that over the coming months following the return of marine equipment that was redeployed to assist the city's flood recovery. So it's all steam ahead for the green bridges programme, Mr Chair, a landmark of this council's commitment to active transport in our city.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Your time has expired. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, two months ago in delivering your budget, you announced that you'd be converting former industrial and commercial zoned land for housing. At the time, you and your planning chair said you were considering sites across the city, but wouldn't reveal where they were located. In media reporting, you were also quoted as saying, 'We're leading the charge in suburban renewal', which is identifying those maybe smaller areas across the city where you can have residential communities growing. You also went on to say that, to promise to identify a number of locations and start planning quite quickly. Given you repeatedly say that you believe your only role in addressing the housing crisis in Brisbane is through planning alone, can you now reveal where you will rezone as part of the urban renewal programme?
Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you, councillor Griffiths, for the question. Certainly, we are leading the charge when it comes to suburban renewal, and we've made it very clear. What we will be doing over the coming months is identifying the first of a number of locations that will be, I guess, pilot projects for suburban renewal. And so, thank you, councillor Griffiths, for acknowledging that we're leading the charge in this respect, because we know that Labor and Greens councillors are leading the charge in another way. They are leading the charge against redevelopment, they are leading the charge against new homes being built, and councillor Griffiths sees himself as a front man in opposing development that occurs in his area. We've seen it time and time again, and we certainly hope that his attitude now has changed, given the gravity of the housing crisis that we see facing us. We know, we know that the number of new homes and apartments being built in Brisbane has come down significantly over the years, from a peak of 11,000 new apartments being built in 2016 to only around 2,300 last year. And if this trend continues, the housing crisis and shortage will only get worse. Now, there are many responses to housing affordability, there are many responses to the housing crisis, but an important one has to be, has to be, providing new homes for people to live in. And whether those homes are suburban houses or apartments or units or townhouses, there is a role for all of those in the mix. And so we're going to make sure that we identify and then work with the community to make sure there are new places to build homes in our city, new places that will help increase supply in our city. And certainly, it's been talked about before, areas that might have previously had large amounts of land being taken up for car yards are a great example. And we know some of the locations where that has occurred, and we've seen over the years the trends changing when it comes to the use of land for car yards. Car yards have changed. Car yards have moved, and we know that also a lot of people do their car shopping online as well, so this is an opportunity.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
The question, the question was, where are the locations? Give us the locations, give us the suburbs, give us the details.
Councillor Griffiths, it was a pretty long question, and the Lord Mayor is addressing the questions, the issues you raise, and providing a response to the question.
Yeah, look, it's quite clear that councillor Griffiths wants to gear up his local scare campaign. I think that's what the question is motivated by. It's quite clear to see. And he says, 'Bring it on', he says, 'Bring it on'. So, once again, Labor councillors are exposed for being the anti-development, anti-home-construction councillors that they are. And they say they care about housing affordability and homelessness. The two things do not go together. The two things do not go together. You have to increase housing supply as our population grows. Now, we know that some of the crazy ideas that have been put forward are break into other people's homes if you don't have one. I wonder if Labor has that policy position as well, because they seem to not support the construction of new homes. So maybe they also support breaking into people's homes if you need somewhere to live. But the reality is, we will do this in a very planned manner, and we will, as soon as we are ready to do so, begin that process of consulting with the community on these locations. But I would point out that, councillor Griffiths, look, he can't help himself. He can't help himself. He just wants to oppose new homes being built. It is quite clear. He's really looking forward to it. And I would simply say, please, resist the reflex, resist the urge to oppose new homes being built, because people need new homes. People are moving here at record numbers. People are coming from all over Australia to live here. Our population is growing the fastest out of any capital city in Australia, and if you continue to have your anti-development, anti-home-construction approach-
Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths.
We've got the political agenda going on here. We want to know the locations. We actually just want to know the locations.
I think the Lord Mayor has answered that question. Councillor Griffiths.
Look, we can assure councillor Griffiths that he will be given the opportunity to support the construction of new homes in his area. He will be given that opportunity. We can assure him that he can have the opportunity to show whether he supports housing affordability and housing supply or not. He will get that opportunity, as will councillor Cassidy, as will councillor Cook. They will all get their opportunity to really show whether they support increased housing construction and supply in their areas. They will be given that opportunity. But it'll be done in good time, and it'll be done at the appropriate time, when the appropriate planning and preparation has been done.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, last weekend saw one of the biggest milestones of the Indrapilly, correction, Mogal Road upgrade with the removal of the roundabout at Indrapilly. Could you please update the chamber on some of the important progress being made in this congestion-busting project?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Mackay for his question. I acknowledge his keen interest in this project and how it will vastly improve the traffic operations in the western suburbs, and also it would be the largest road project we're engaging with this term. So it is going to be a very important piece of the network. You know, whenever you deal with people in the western suburbs, they'll always tell you that Mogal Road is the bane of their daily existence, and that's the whole-
Councillor Strunk, please.
And that's a whole range of the district. You know, the western suburbs can be quite a big place. So we are working to address that by upgrading one of the central and most difficult areas for motorists to pass, that is the Indrapilly roundabout or that portion of Mogal Road there. So we must take a moment to recognise that the portion controlled by council is from sort of BBC there at Whitmore Street all the way to roughly just short of the Western Freeway. The concerns that people have beyond the Western Freeway are the concerns that belong to the state government. I encourage people to contact them and for them to address their necessary responsibility to upgrade that part of the road as well. But we are committed to delivering what we can on our roads. Now, many people would know that we are working through our whole portion of Mogal Road to deliver a whole range of upgrades through the Mogal Road corridor project, but this Sunday just gone saw the largest single change that the residents there will see before the new project is complete. And that has saw the closure of the roundabout and the creation of a T intersection. Now, the T intersection will provide our people with a lot more certainty. The changes that were required to put that in place, and the changes to deal with underground services and to prepare the site and to prepare the removal of the roundabout, did mean that there was occasional lane changes in the operations of that roundabout. But now this new T intersection will be there, and it will be clearer and more certain, and allow greater and more predictable traffic movements for the people who use that intersection. It's important to remember that it's not merely efficiency that is the motivation to do this upgrade, but rather a safe road network is also very important. Between the years of 2013 and 2018, there were 32 recorded accidents, 10 of which required hospitalisation, 17 requiring medical treatment, and five resulting in minor injuries. And of course, that does not include the close calls and ones that did not require ambulance intervention. The intersection carries about 38,000 vehicles per day to the west of Mogal Road, 47,000 to its east, and 25,000 along the Coonan Street access, which is the southern access. And congestion and traffic volumes are anticipated to increase with ongoing population growth. So in a partnership between the federal government and this council, we worked to address this central part of council's controlled Mogal Road. The removal of the roundabout is the feature of this project. Now, this Sunday just gone saw the creation of that T intersection. Now, how did that work? We distributed a whole range, some tens of thousands of notifications as this change was going to occur. We advised that there would be road closures at the approaches to the roundabout turned T intersection for 15 minutes as we changed the priority over from a roundabout to a T. That was expected to occur at 8 o'clock on Sunday night. That did occur, and can I also recognise the officers engaged in that project who took their family and friends down to watch it happen. So some of our engineers were so committed that they went down and had a bit of a family night out to see this change. So I know, I just want to recognise their commitment to the project and their commitment to seeing that occur. There will be ongoing issues as we work through this project, but the largest issues continue to be reallocation and realignment of underground services, and that is taking up a great deal of the energy of our project team. There will be further evidence of that into the future. But with underground services, including gas, water, sewer, electricity, and communication, that will need to be moved from the old alignment into the new alignment, and to address the fact that we're effectively building an overpass or a bridge, will require a great deal of work. That work is ongoing, and it will affect some of the approaches-
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the Rivermakers Precinct in Morningside Ward being developed by the BMI Group has been the subject of 15 development applications being lodged or decided in the last 12 months alone. On top of this, there have been numerous show cause notices and enforcement notices issued by council, not to mention a number of planning and environment court cases. On the other side of the road is Australian Country Choice, a large meatworks company who have recently indicated they may relocate their operations to New South Wales as they require, and I quote, 'long-term planning certainty', which they say puts around 1,500 jobs at risk.
Point of order, Mr Chair, point of order.
Point of order, councillor.
In accordance with the meeting's local law, questions are meant to be asked succinctly without statement. Could you bring the question back to the back, please?
Councillor Cook, I assume you're getting quickly to a question?
Sorry, actually, point of order, Mr Chair. Councillor Cook is asking a question on behalf of an organisation who, I read in The Courier-Math, have made significant contributions to the Labor Party. Could she please provide further information about any perceived or material conflicts of interest?
Councillor, thank you councillor Wines for that point of order. We haven't actually had a question yet, councillor Wines. I'm hoping we get to a question pretty soon.
Was that a valid point of order, Mr Chair?
Well, I ruled on the point, I ruled on the-
Certainly, some negative inferences were made upon me and my potential conflicts. I don't know in what capacity that would be.
Councillor, I'm encouraging you to get to your question, please.
Mr Chair, I would ask you to ask councillor Wines to withdraw those comments because they were inappropriate.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor.
I think you need to explain very clearly to councillor Cook. It is our legislative responsibility to ask if there is a conflict of interest. If a question is asked about a political donor, it is a conflict of interest.
Thank you. So councillor Johnston, please. Councillor Wines and councillor Adams, thank you. We haven't actually got to the question yet, and as there is no decision being made, I think we will allow the question to stand.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Would you like me to start the question from the beginning?
No, no, I want you to get to the question, please.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, have you personally met with representatives from BMI or Australian Country Choice about these ongoing issues?
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Well, that's a really interesting question, on an issue that has been going on for quite some time, that the local councillor would suddenly take an interest, particularly after certain donations were made to the Labor Party in recent times. But, look, I can say that I have absolutely met with representatives from both of these properties, both of these properties, multiple times. And, oh, 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 yes. Who would have thought? Who would have thought that I would actually meet with people as Lord Mayor? I mean, outrageous. It's an outrageous suggestion that I would meet with them. We know, we know that councillor Cook refuses to meet with anyone who wants to build new homes in her ward. She refuses. But I actually do meet with people, believe it or not. Now, this particular matter is an interesting one, because I've had a very clear view on this right from the beginning, and I've made it clear to both sides, both owners, and that is that this issue mirrors another one that we've seen before in Brisbane, and that was the issue with the Forex Brewery at Milton. Now, for those of you who know planning history in Brisbane, you would know that the state government wanted to encourage the development of transit-oriented developments in Brisbane. And one of those signature projects was actually the big building at the Milton Train Station directly opposite the Milton Brewery. Now, there was a concern that introducing new homes right next to a functioning brewery that obviously emits certain emissions and noise and operates on a 24-hour basis could give rise to complaints or uncertainty about that business in the future. Now, thankfully, we saw common sense prevail, and the state government decided that they would protect both the residents and the brewery. And they introduced some legislation to protect- And they introduced some legislation to protect, effectively reverse amenity complaints. And so it was a case of this brewery has a right to be there and they are protected under law to continue operating, being there. I have proposed exactly this same solution in the case that Counselor Cook has just asked a question on. I think it is a sensible thing to do. I think Australian Country Choice has a right to be there, but by the same token, the idea that no one can do anything near them is, I don't think, a fair assumption in a city that is constantly changing and growing and evolving. And so my solution, which I've advocated from day one, is to use the Milton Brewery legislation and put it in favour of Australian Country Choice, but also to give some certainty to the things that are happening in the area. And that way, it protects those jobs in the meatworks, but it also means that we don't have a ridiculous situation where the meatworks is opposing everything that's happening around them. I think both can coexist and I look forward to seeing a really positive solution here when the state government takes our suggestion of implementing the Milton Brewery legislation protections. I think that is the right thing to do. The power is entirely in the state government's hands on this. They can do it and we have already indicated to them that we would support such a move. We have put it in writing multiple times to them and we look forward to them implementing that solution, which I think will be a good common sense outcome, which will protect the interests of both sides of this argument and allow things to continue on, which I think is in the interests of jobs in our community, it's in the interests of economic development in our community. And suburban renewal as well because we saw what was a disused factory there being activated and brought to life in new ways, classic suburban renewal. And while there are no homes being built there, nor would we support any homes being built there, we know that there are different types of businesses popping up, including craft breweries, including a whole range of other uses down there, such as the world's biggest garage sale, which is a great social enterprise, which is now at threat because of this dispute. And so we're simply saying the right answer is for the state government to enact these legislative protections for Australian Country Choice. It is a sensible outcome. The state government has it within their power and we call on them yet again to implement that protection.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, Counselor Adams. Deputy Mayor, as many would now be aware, the Queen Street Mall recently celebrated its 40th anniversary since it officially becoming a mall and opening to pedestrians. Can you please update the chamber on what celebrations are in store for this milestone event?
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Adam, and thank you for the question because we are heading up to about the second or third week of celebrations reminiscing about the Queen Street Mall to mark its 40th anniversary. Officially opened in 1882, a wonderful legacy from the Commonwealth Games and foresight for the Games. The Queen was here to open it and greet people as well, but it is a reminder of our forever changing face of the Brisbane's city centre. It's had royalty, as I mentioned, it's had rock stars, it's had roller coasters, as the Lord Mayor remembered recently as well. It's had a very colourful history over its 40 years and still today remains one of Australia's longest-running and most popular open-air malls. It attracts over a million pedestrian movements every week and I think we're just hitting up to the 73% of the pre-COVID pedestrian numbers from 2019 as well. But it has continued to evolve over the decades. My Centre, Winter Garden, Burnett Lane, the expansion of the mall through Albert Street. You may have noticed it's been a little bit busier of late with a couple of weeks requiring the highest pedestrian movements in this 12-month period. It's very encouraging to see the hustle and the bustle returning to the city after a couple of years that have been extremely hard for our traders. It's even more encouraging to see new bars, cafes, restaurants popping up throughout the CBD on every corner, a sign of confidence in our retail, food and bev industries. And of course, a sign of confidence in Brisbane. Once an Olympic city, always Olympic city and we see people wanting to move here, wanting to live here and wanting to work here as well. It is our CBD, it is our central beating heart of the city. More than 500 retailers and brands holding more than 1,000 events a year and of course, one of the biggest ones on the Fashion Festival calendar this week with the Brisbane Fashion Festival. It's had a great history, as I said, since it started from a major sporting event. So just think about the opportunities we may have for a major sporting event coming up in the next 10 years as well. So there's milestones and there's moments of change, but it's always nice to actually celebrate it as well. Think of what Expo 88 did for South Bank and I remember the 30th anniversary of that, that seems not too long ago. We'll nearly be having the 40th for that one soon as well. And the Big 4-0 is going to go off with a street party this Friday. So hopefully you've picked it up on socials and you're sharing it with your community. We're going to step back in time and have a little bit of everything from fashion, retail, dining, entertainment to mark the milestone. There's free workshops in fashion and beauty, Master Classes was an extension of the last day of the Brisbane Fashion Festival from 10am to 5pm. Runway shows from the Winter Garden at five, six and seven, featuring the best of our local traders. We have got our fantastic Queen Street Mall ambassadors, Annabelle Falco and Kerry Carucci, that will be there to show you how they do it. A perfect timing to bookend a week of runway shows after you've seen how beautiful the models look this week as well. There'll be a pop-up champagne bar at Jimmy's on the Mall, a glass of bubbles, sit back and watch the hustle and the bustle as people go by. And we continue the festivities into the night with a special one-off night markets at Redcliffe Place from 4pm till late. And of course, it wouldn't be a party without a bit of a bop as well and we've got some fantastic tunes and entertainment. The bottom half of the mall is going to be transformed into an open-air music venue like no other. The main stage will be outside the Winter Garden. Local talent will be shown through our City Sounds programme right throughout the day. I do believe there's some cube effect performers as well. We've seen them a lot over the last couple of months. I'm not sure about mouldy lovers, but I know there's cube effect in their city sounds and I can finally, I can finally reveal our double bill headline acts for the night will be none other than music royalty Vanessa Amarosi and Kate Sobrano. So a fitting duo for the night. They've played together many times before and they're extremely excited to be coming here to celebrate the 40th anniversary of the mall with us as well. So Kate will be hitting the stage at 5:30pm and Vanessa at 6:30pm. It is a free, all-ages event, so make sure you can secure your spot and get amongst the action. It is official, this is your official invite to the biggest birthday bash of the year. Get out and enjoy our beautiful iconic Queen Street and please raise a glass, reminisce on the good time. Happy birthday, Queen Street Mall and look forward to many more to come.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Cook?
Thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Labor councillors recently attended the Virginia Bus Depot and heard from a large group of drivers about how they are deprived from regular bathroom breaks. Some drivers are having to park their buses in the city and walk considerable distances just to go to the toilet and then they are being questioned on their whereabouts. Permanent drivers are reporting that every pay increase for the past 10 years has been eaten up by a reduction in rostered hours. Lord Mayor, what will you do to address these issues in council's upcoming EBA with our city's bus drivers?
Thank you. Lord Mayor?
Well, given the last question and the donations that were made recently and given this question and the donations that continue to be made, we can be clear on who's pulling the strings with Labor councillors. They ask questions on behalf of donors, not on behalf of residents, and it is quite concerning. Now, when it comes to our workforce of bus operators, we are proud to have the highest-paid bus operators in Queensland, the highest-paid bus operators. And we are also proud to offer some of the best and most flexible working conditions for our bus operators and also amongst the most modern vehicles to operate as well. Now, we remember what Labor's record was when it comes to buses. We remember that under Labor, buses would regularly catch fire and burn up while they're en route. That's not safe. We know that we also saw many incidences, Counselor Owen, of, I guess, vandals throwing rocks at buses and having smashed glass. These are the sort of, I guess, issues that bus operators had to deal with under Labor. We move very quickly to make sure that our fleet is modern, our fleet is safe and secure. And so we have rolled out anti-shattered glass, we have rolled out CCTV cameras in every bus. Now, we know what Counselor Sri thinks about that. We have rolled out protection barriers across our fleet as well. We have rolled out duress alarms and we continue to invest in our fleet and also in our drivers or bus operators and their training. And I have to say, if you have a look at the type of facilities that our operators get to use compared to other operators, ours are the gold standard. We have the newest facilities and the best facilities, particularly when it comes to depots and all of the associated benefits that come with working for Brisbane City Council. We pride ourselves in being an employer of choice, looking after our workers and we will continue to do so. And so my commitment is in any EBA negotiation with any of our staff, whether they are bus operators or other types of staff, we will do our best to make sure that council is an employer of choice and that we look after and support and reward and celebrate the work that our workers do, not only on behalf of the council, but on behalf of the city of Brisbane and the people of Brisbane. And so when it comes to our bus operators, we look forward to working with them to make sure that they stay.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, Counselor.
Can the Lord Mayor address the question? Are bus drivers able to go to the bathroom or not? We've heard a lot about everything else to do with the depots and everything else, but when they're en route...
Counselor, that was part of your preamble. The question was about the negotiations with the bus drivers about their EBA. I believe the Lord Mayor is answering the question.
Well, the answer is of course they're able to go to the bathroom. Of course they are. And it's, you know, it's quite concerning to suggest that, or that Counselor Cook is suggesting that they're not allowed to. Of course they are allowed to. And in fact, we had a discussion just recently about providing some additional driver facilities at County Street. So we're actively working to improve the infrastructure, the support that they get. We've invested in the facilities, we've invested in the fleet and we've invested in our bus operators. We will continue to do so because we care about them, we support them and we appreciate the work they do for the community.
Thank you. Counselors, that ends question time for today. Ran out of time. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is ENC. Lord Mayor?
Chair, under section 112A, I ask that item five on today's agenda be brought forward for consideration at this time. The motion, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Okay, so that is in accordance with meeting's local law 112. You can bring forward the business at set and that is on the agenda for today. So that is currently item five on the agenda, councillors. Counselor Saranginathan, do you want to move your notified motion at this point, please?
Yeah, I'm just going to bring it up. It's in the agenda.
It's in the agenda.
Chair, I move that Brisbane City Council supports change in existing speed limit rules so that the default speed limit on all local and neighbourhood streets in areas with residential land uses becomes 30 kilometres an hour. This change would include local and neighbourhood streets or sections of streets where the prevailing land uses are low-density, medium-density or high-density residential, but would not include areas where the prevailing land use or land zoning is rural or rural residential. This motion does not propose any changes to roads designated as district, suburban or arterial roads. In special cases, certain individual local and neighbourhood streets in residential areas could still be signed 40 kilometres an hour or 50 kilometres an hour where the specific context makes this appropriate. Brisbane City Council resolves to initiate discussions with the state government to enact this change.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston, may I take that motion as read?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. You've read that onto the record very well, Counselor Saranginathan. I now invite debate, Counselor Saranginathan.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I brought this motion to the chamber today in the hopes of provoking a mature and evidence-based discussion about how we can improve road safety in residential streets. And I must say, I was a little bit disappointed that instead of engaging with that conversation in good faith, that Alan Pearce tried to provoke outrage and deliberately misrepresent the motion in order to score some cheap political points. I will, however, try to rise above that and instead focus simply on the substance of the motion itself. And I think it's worth highlighting at the outset that what we're talking about here are local and neighbourhood streets. Yes, there are quite a lot of local and neighbourhood streets in Brisbane. There are in fact thousands of streets across the city that fall under those classifications, but they are overwhelmingly the smallest and lowest volume streets of our city. In fact, if there is a particular street that's carrying a higher volume of cars, then the common sense approach and the process that's set out by council's own planning documents and processes is that the street's classification should be changed. So any suggestion that this motion is applying to busier suburban and district roads or indeed to main roads and arterial corridors is nonsense, it's deliberate misinformation and I would go so far as to categorise it as deceptive. We are specifically talking here about the streets that don't really lead anywhere other than to people's homes. We're talking about maybe the streets right at the beginning of a motorist's journey or the streets right at the end of a motorist's journey. And I think that's important to emphasise because for most motorists, the majority of the trips they're making are on those suburban and district connectors and those arterial corridors. The motorists might only spend a minute or two on those residential streets at the start or the end of their trip. But it's important that those smaller residential streets have a lower speed limit because those are also the streets that children use when they're walking to their local primary school. They're the streets that don't always have separated footpaths for people to walk along the footpath. Sometimes, in some cases, and certainly this is the case for some of these streets in my areas, there's literally the banks or the retaining walls on these streets are so steep that there isn't actually anywhere else you can walk other than on the road itself. And I don't think that's ideal. I think council needs to rectify that. But we're talking by and large here about streets that carry very few cars, but where pedestrians don't really have safe alternatives often to actually walk anywhere but on the road itself. The evidence base for lower speed limits is growing and support for lower speed limits is growing rapidly around the world. We've seen in recent decades, dozens of cities around the world have introduced 30 kilometre an hour speed limits or 20 mile per hour speed limits in some places. And more recently, we've seen entire cities drop their speed limit to 30 kilometres an hour, not just the smaller residential streets like this motion proposes, but in fact, every street across this major metropolitan area. We're now seeing that even jurisdictions like Yarra City Council down in Melbourne are trialling 30 kilometre an hour speed limits. I understand there's a trial in Geraldton, Western Australia for 30 kilometre an hour speed limits, cities around parts of Adelaide. I could go on and on, Auckland, Wellington, Barcelona in Spain, Paris in France. Long list of cities are now doing this and they're doing it because the evidence shows very clearly that it improves safety, it encourages people to travel by active transport, it makes it safer and more comfortable to be a pedestrian or a cyclist. And crucially, that helps encourage a shift away from car dependence. And I talk to people, I particularly talk to parents of schoolkids who say, look, if it was safer for my kid to walk to school, I'd be happy to let them do it, but I drive them because I don't think our streets are safe enough for my kids. I hear that frequently from people and I think that's really important to dwell on here because we're not just talking about a change that would make the road network safer for existing pedestrians. We're talking about a change that would reduce traffic congestion because it would make it easier for more people to be a pedestrian. This is not a radical proposal, this is not some far-out, like left-wing socialist conspiracy as the mayor has suggested. This is a common sense, evidence-based change that a range of advocacy groups in this city have been calling for for some time, not just space bicycling and bicycle Queensland, but also Queensland Walks. There have even at times been policy statements from the RACQ indicating support for lower speed limits in certain areas. And I note that actually we do already have 30 kilometre an hour speed limits and 20 kilometre an hour speed limits on some streets in some parts of our city that are particularly busy or have particularly high volumes of pedestrians. We also in fact have lots of car parking areas where the speed limit is... where the speed limit is low as 10 kilometres an hour. It's not practically impossible or radical proposal. And I hasten to emphasise as well that this motion contemplates the possibility that some local or neighbourhood roads might need to have a higher speed limit. Perhaps there are certain roads that are a bit longer or that carry a higher volumes or where there are particularly low volumes of pedestrians where the speed limit could indeed remain at 40 kilometres an hour or 50 kilometres an hour. The point here is not to say that every single street across the city has to go to 30 kilometres an hour. It's just to say that this would be the default norm for local and neighbourhood streets, and some local and neighbourhood streets might instead have speeds of 40 or 50 or 60 kilometres an hour. The other reason that I think we should be seriously considering this and moving in this direction is that lower speed limits make a street environment or a footpath environment a more pleasant place to exist on, whether it's just sort of hanging out in your front yard, chatting to your neighbours, or whether it's kids being able to learn to ride their bike in the quiet cul-de-sac or maybe play a game of street cricket or street soccer on the road. The reality is that streets have been used in that way for decades, if not hundreds of years. And it's only in sort of the past 40 or 50 years that we've seen this dramatic shift where streets are considered the exclusive domain of cars and all other modes of transport and all other uses of that public space are deprioritised and pushed to the edge. So we've come through a period of radical change where the car has been prioritised as the only legitimate user of public roadways and all other uses have been deprioritised. And what I'm proposing now with this motion is a slight minor incremental correction to that radical change. I'm sure the mayor's going to get up here and accuse me of being anti-motorist, and I quite resent that. I think it's silly and childish. I'm not. I actually drive a car, Lord Mayor. That's interesting, isn't it? I know a lot of people who drive cars, but some of my best friends drive cars. And I think the Lord Mayor does us all a disservice when he tries to oversimplify this debate and turn it into a pedestrians versus cars, us and them kind of discussion. I acknowledge that cars are going to continue to play a part in the transport network of our city for a long time. But the blunt reality, as a matter of pragmatics, is that we have to shift more people towards public and active transport. And lower speed limits on these very small residential backstreets are one piece of that puzzle. We also need a dramatic increase in funding for pedestrian crossings and traffic calming. We need more support for separated bike lanes. We need a reconfiguration of the timings of traffic signals so that pedestrians don't have to wait as long to get across busy roads. There are lots of important changes we can and should be making in this space. But lower speed limits on residential backstreets is one of the simplest and cheapest changes we can make. And it's one that is backed up by the evidence. I'm not going to go into detail about all the statistics and stopping distances because I don't think the mayor is interested in evidence like that. I think he's primarily concerned about public sentiment. And I accept that the entire population of Brisbane is not yet on board with this change. I accept the premise that there are quite a few residents who don't want to see speed limits reduced to 30 kilometres an hour in their neighbourhood streets. And I accept that we still have more consultation and more discussions with the community to undertake about this. But we need to at least seriously consider this proposal and engage with it on its merits rather than turning this into a mudslinging match or some excuse to score political points. And so I don't expect the LMP to vote for this motion today. I don't expect it to get up. But I know from my own consultations and from the reaction I've had to this that support for 30 kilometre an hour speed limits is growing. It's growing steadily. I first proposed this several years ago, and at the time, there was a stronger pushback. I've noticed that the pushback this time around is distinctly softer. And I've had a lot of positive feedback, not just from key advocacy groups and transport planners and safety experts, but from the general public. I believe that one way or another, at some point in the future, we will start to lower speed limits to 30 kilometres an hour, not just on residential streets but also on busy commercial precincts. It's really just a question of when that finally happens.
Thank you. Councillor Saranginathan, your time has expired. Further speakers? Are there further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on this motion, and I flag I have an amendment. And I might need a seconded. So firstly, I seconded this motion before us today for the purposes of debate. There is without question, it is a major failing of this LNP administration over the past 18 years that they have failed to respond in practical and substantive ways to local road safety issues. This LNP administration refuses to support everyday, practical traffic safety issues in our area like zebra crossings, wombat crossings, like reducing speed limits on local roads, like traffic calming. I think there are only about six traffic calming projects in the whole city this year that this Lord Mayor is supporting. And Graham Quirk openly refused to support them, and he did at least 10 a year. So this LNP administration, we know, wants to give the car the right of way at every single opportunity. Now, I've been a vocal campaigner in my ward to see speed limits reduced where it is appropriate. And I certainly believe that there should be more options on the table that are available to both council and the state government to lower the speed limit to what is appropriate for the street. So I certainly think that we should have the flexibility of considering 30 kilometres an hour as well as 40 and 50. I think that there should be an optional standard for local and neighbourhood streets and not necessarily a default standard. I'm not quite sure councillor Sri's got that quite right. Default means that every street is 30 unless otherwise signed. Whereas I think 30 should be an option where it is appropriate. And certainly, there will be streets in Brisbane where a speed limit like 30 would be very appropriate. Certainly where there are very high activity areas, where streets are incredibly narrow, and there are many other reasons to have a 30 speed limit. However, I don't want to see a perverse outcome where we might have a 40 kilometre an hour speed limit on a main road through a school zone, and it's only 30 on a side street. So we need to make sure that for drivers, there is some sort of consistency and there is some sort of organisation around how any change might be made. So I certainly believe that we should have flexibility to have 30 where it is appropriate. I certainly would like to see the option of 30, 40, or 50 for all local streets and neighbourhood streets. And I think there, we need better cooperation between the state and council because it is so incredibly difficult to get a speed limit changed through. And I just point to Venna Road where we saw a pedestrian killed three years ago now. Venna Road is a district road. It has a default speed limit of 60. I've been lobbying for some time with the family, with Geoff Copeland's family, to have the speed limit reduced to 50. So it's not like we're asking for something radical. And this council refuses. It is appalling to me that where people die on our streets, this administration refuses to consider lowering the speed limit. And the state government is just as culpable in this as council. And the fact that, the fact that to get 40 in a street, you essentially need to have a high-activity pedestrian area or a local school is simply not good enough. We need to be looking at more flexible options, and that should include 50, 40, and 30 on all local or neighbourhood streets, depending on the conditions, depending on the road, depending on the topography, depending on the road's purpose. There are a whole heap of range of issues, and I really think that we should look at the flexibility of that. We need to make sure that any speed limit on a road is fit for purpose. And as I said, I certainly believe there are some roads, and councillor for the Gabbers electorate or Ward certainly has a lot of very narrow streets with very small footpaths. And in older suburbs, the footpath's only about a metre wide, and then you've got the front fence. So I can certainly understand why in some parts of our inner city and other older built-up parts of Brisbane, a speed limit of 30 would be sensible and appropriate. In other places, it may be 40, and in other places, it may be 50 or even 60. But it's my position that we should have some flexibility. Now, I was very happy to support this motion. It's been 12 years since I've been an independent, and I've been lucky enough that someone's usually seconded my motion. So I thought councillor Saranginathan should have, sorry, hopefully I've got that right, Jonny, should have the option of getting his motions on the table as well. I support the intent of his motion, but I don't support necessarily the exact wording of that. So I flag I do have an amendment, and I hope that someone will second it in the spirit of the purpose of debate that we are here today. You're free to vote however you want. But I move the following amendment. In the first paragraph, delete the words 'existing speed limit rules' so that 'default' and the word 'becomes', delete the fourth paragraph, and replace the first paragraph with, Brisbane City Council supports changing the speed limit on all local and neighbourhood streets in areas with residential land uses to enable a standard 30, 40, or 50 kilometre signage where specific context makes this appropriate. And I hope someone will second it for the purpose of debate.
Yeah, all right, I'll second it.
The amendment has been seconded. I don't have a copy, unfortunately. Thank you. So councillor Johnson has moved an amendment to the motion before us. In the first paragraph, delete existing speed limit rules so that the default... So that the default becomes, is it? And fourth paragraph, delete, replace first paragraph... Fourth paragraph, delete, okay. Might be easier if it's typed out. Replace first paragraph with, Brisbane City Council supports changing the speed limit to all local and neighbourhood streets in areas with residential land uses to enable as standard 30 kilometres, 40 kilometres, and 50 kilometres signage where the specific context makes this appropriate. It is seconded to your amendment, councillor Johnston.
Thank you, and I thank councillor Sri for seconding this amendment. I know he probably won't support it, but I appreciate that he's prepared to second it for the purpose of debate. I did speak to councillor Sri when he asked me to second this motion, and I don't think he's in any, it would be any surprise to him to see that I think it should be optional rather than mandatory. So the motion before us today essentially deletes paragraph four and combines paragraph one and part of paragraph four. So essentially, I'm suggesting that the speed limit for local and neighbourhood streets should be, have a standard of either 30, 40, or 50, depending on the specific context of the street. Now, I know that that will require changes from the state government, and that is in the fifth paragraph before us today. But as far as I'm concerned, we need more tools in our toolkit as Brisbane City Council to make sure that streets in Brisbane have the right speed limit for the right context. And certainly, I believe there is opportunity, I personally think, for a lot more 40s. And I think that's a speed limit that's readily understood by our community. But I would certainly like to see a greater flexibility both from the state government and council for either 30, 40, or 50 on neighbourhood and local streets. I do think that that would make sure that the right speed limit is on the right road. We need this to be changed in policy, in the manual of uniform traffic devices, so that it can be done as a matter of course. At the moment, it is much too hard to change the speed limit. Brisbane City Council refuses at the drop of a hat. It is incredibly difficult. And as I said, the state government also refuse. And we have this problem where streets that need the speed limit reduced can't get it done because of bureaucratic intransigence at the council level and the state government level. So the first thing, in my view, is making sure the policy changes so that we have the right options and flexibility in the traffic rules to make sure that speed limits can reflect the use of the street, its function, its width, its purpose, all of those things. So I would just say that I support the debate we're having today. I welcome councillor Sri raising the issue. I would just like to see this as an option rather than it being mandatory. And I hope all councillors will support the amendment before us today.
Thank you. Further debate on the amendment? Councillor Saranginathan.
Thanks. Yeah, I might just take the opportunity to pick up on a few of the comments that councillor Johnston made. I think the amended motion probably leaves things a little bit ambiguous because what I was trying to introduce was a default speed limit of 30 kilometres an hour. And essentially, this motion says that speeds could be 30 or 40 or 50 depending on the context. So maybe the motion doesn't have quite as much impact in that sense. But I understand the intent and I'm, you know, honestly, if we could at least get halfway there, I'd still be quite pleased with that. The, I think the other point that councillor Johnston made, which I wanted to take up, was just around school zones. And actually, I think that there are quite a lot of school zones around our city where the school zone speed limit should also be 30 kilometres an hour. Maybe that's not the case for some of those major road corridors. But I do think schools, we should be considering dropping a lot of school zone speed limits to 30 kilometres an hour as well. And if the other councillors in this chamber are interested in that, I'm happy to bring another motion specifically about school zones. I believe, and someone might correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in Adelaide, and perhaps most of South Australia, I think school zones are 30 kilometres an hour already. So I do think there's a case to be talking seriously about school zone speed limits dropping as well. And if that's really a problem, if that's really the argument against generalised 30 kilometre an hour speed limits, I think we could have them on school zones and on local and neighbourhood roads around the city. The other element that we didn't really get to in detail in my initial comments was just around certainty and clarity. And as a general principle, I think it is better to have consistency across large areas. I've thought in the past about the value of bringing discreet motions for specific suburbs and saying, hey, let's have a general 30 kilometre an hour speed limit just for West End or just for Highgate Hill. And I do understand that if you only introduce that in one suburb at a time, that might cause a bit more confusion, or the lack of clarity might make things more difficult for some motorists. So I've been persuaded by transport planning advocates that it is better to push for generalised speed limit reform across the city as a whole. But I do think there's a case, as councillor Johnston said, for focusing on some particular inner-city suburbs as an alternative. I understand from a strategic perspective, the LMP are never going to want to support a motion that the Greens councillor brings to this chamber. But I hope that at least by having this conversation, we can provoke a bit more detailed debate and discussion and say, okay, if you don't think a default speed limit of 30 kilometres an hour across the city is appropriate, where are the areas that we want to lower those speed limits? Because there are plenty of streets around the inner south side and the inner north side that clearly weren't designed to be 50 kilometre an hour streets, that are clearly too narrow or too bendy or too tight to be safe to drive on at 50 kilometres an hour. And the speed limit in those streets definitely needs to drop. There are already busy precincts where the speed limit has been reduced. And in fact, we heard the deputy mayor talking earlier about the mall, like, the sections of Albert Street that lead into the mall, they're not 50 kilometres an hour. There's a recognition that lower speed limits in those areas supports more pedestrian movements, makes it a safer environment for pedestrians. So if we can have lower speed limits in the inner city and on places like Burnett Lane and parts of Albert Street, why can't we have lower speed limits on a small cul-de-sac with 12 houses up in Cherm Side or down in Mount Gravat that only a few cars drive on per day? It would make no substantial difference to travel times. I think probably a lot of motorists, once they experienced it, wouldn't have any issues with the change. The problem, though, is that we, as elected reps, need to lead some of those conversations and make the case and talk about the advantages to bring the public with us. And I think that gets a lot harder when the LNP takes an obstinate, no-compromise position and won't even entertain discussions that a lot of other cities have been having and are continuing to have. So, yeah, I guess the amended motion, I think, in some senses, is a little more confusing due to its ambiguity. But I'd still be happy for this to get up rather than to see the idea voted down altogether. I do just want to reiterate as well, though, that I think this is an accessibility issue, too. I talk to people with impaired mobility for whom crossing a street is a stressful experience. Finding a gap in the traffic, knowing that you're going to be able to get across both lanes in time can be really hard, not just for people in wheelchairs, people with prams, but people with canes or walkers, just people who are a little bit slower to get around. They, as a matter, again, it's not possible for every single street throughout suburbia to have dedicated pedestrian crossings. I don't think we'll ever get to that point. I don't think we'll ever get to that point. So there are always going to be certain smaller residential streets that people are crossing without any kind of signalisation or without zebra crossings. So on all those small residential streets where someone's walking down to the corner shops or walking down to the bus stop, there are, there are moments when people with limited mobility or people who walk a little bit slower really struggle to get across those streets when the traffic is moving at 40 or 50 kilometres an hour. And slowing those speed limits down to 30 kilometres an hour gives those people the safety and confidence to move around their neighbourhoods autonomously. It, it, it stops them being prisoners in their own home and I, I know that sounds like evocative language, but that, that is the language that I've heard some disabled people use. And, and the simple reality is that a speed limit of 30 kilometres an hour dramatically reduces the stopping distance for, for a large motor vehicle. And it also means that if, in, in the rare case where there is a collision, the actual harm done to the pedestrian is significantly reduced. So there might still be the occasional crash, but a crash at 30 kilometres an hour is a lot less likely to cause death or serious harm than a crash at, yeah, 30 kilometres an hour. So I think there's, there's value here in this, this idea. And I think over time, the councillors in this chamber will probably shift their positions. I've spoken to a couple of LNP councillors privately who seemed interested in the idea and said, look, I, I won't be able to say this publicly, but I think you're on to something, Jono. So like, let's, let's be mature adults about this and, and I'm not going to name it, but, but, but.
Councillors please.
But, but let's think deeply about which direction we want our city to head in and recognise that recently the state government has introduced some speed limits for e-scooters and said, look, it's not safe for these powered mobility devices to be going faster than 25 kilometres an hour. To be honest, an e-scooter, if it collides with someone, does a lot less damage than a car, right? So if, if we look at stopping distances and we look at the likelihood of harm and we say that even on roadways, e-scooters need to have their speeds limited to that degree. Logically, we should be talking about the same thing about these much larger vehicles that have the potential to cause a lot more harm. I should mention, I've heard, seen one or two rather silly arguments on Facebook about how cars can't drive at 30 kilometres an hour because they're not designed to do so. Simply not true, simply ridiculous. Cars drive at lower speeds all the time when they're circling around car parks or when they're in traffic or whatever. So any suggestion on that front, I think is a bit ludicrous and I hope the LNP will at least have the common sense not to go down that road. But I, I just wanted to sort of finish by, by thinking about the experience for people in cities that actually value pedestrians and actually prioritise pedestrian movements through their neighbourhoods. We've all visited those cities where it feels like there's a lot more happening on the street, where you can have a conversation without being drowned out by the noise of traffic, where people can safely move about their neighbourhood without living in fear of being hit by a car. And those are, those are pleasant cities and pleasant neighbourhoods to move around in. They're pleasant neighbourhoods to visit. And, and there's no reason that our streets in, in a city like Brisbane couldn't also be nicer places to exist in without that fear of being hit by a car. So I, I, I'm not going to die in a ditch about this one. I think, to be honest, there are other, other changes I'd like to see that I think are even higher priorities such as funding for more pedestrian crossings at particular dangerous locations and more funding for dedicated footpaths, particularly in some of those areas that don't have as many connected footpaths as my ward does. So I think there's other stuff we need to make changes to as well. But this is a, a simple, cheap, common sense change that lots of other cities are already introducing. And I, I take heart at least in, in the fact that it, it probably will happen at some point. As I said before, it's just a matter of when. And, and it will happen sooner if councillors at least take on, do a little bit of the work of reading the literature, engaging with what transport planning experts, experts have been saying for a long time. Look at the evidence because the evidence is clear that this is a good idea. And I think we have a responsibility as elected reps to be led by that evidence rather than to be led by fear mongering and paranoia.
Thank you. Further speakers on the amendment? Any further speakers on the amendment? Councillor Johnston.
Well, thank you so much councillor Sri for rising to speak on the amendment and for seconding as well. I think what's disappointing for anybody who's following this debate is that the LNP who control the majority in this council don't even want to contribute to it. This indicates very clearly, I think, to every single Brisbane resident several things. Firstly, they don't care about road safety in this city and they're not interested in making sure that there are, there is a genuine discussion about the appropriate speed limit on local streets. Secondly, it says that they don't even countenance any kind of constructive debate about ideas other than their own. And I think that's been the hallmark of this LNP administration, certainly over the 14 years that I've been here. I've made dozens and dozens of motions in this place and there's only ever one that's ever been supported. So what this says more than anything is this LNP administration is prepared to accept deaths on our local road, they, they support schools children being put at risk, that they support 60, 50 in all local streets regardless of the context. Now, I know that the motion that councillor Sri is putting forward is a little bit more, is a little bit more, what's the right, it's, it's, it's more than what I think we should be doing. It is too prescriptive is the word that I would like to use. I understand his intention and I support the intention of what he is doing, but the amendment that I've put forward today simply says that we will consider 30, 40 or 50 kilometres an hour on local and neighbourhood streets and that we should be lobbying the Queensland state government to make sure that policy change happens. Now I know from my experience as a councillor in this place that both Brisbane City Council and the Queensland state government fail to reduce the speed limit where it is needed. And Venna Road is an, an excellent example of this and I am horrified, horrified that Brisbane City Council and the state government refuse to lower the speed limit on a road where a pedestrian was killed just a few years ago. It is a simple, cheap and practical change that we could do right now to make sure that our local roads are safer. We know in my area in particular that many residents walk on the street in my area. One of the most beautiful streets in all of Brisbane is Laurel Avenue and there would definitely be more people walking on the street than there are on the footpath. And I get regular complaints about speeding in that street and its default is 50. I think we should be consulting with residents to make sure that we introduce speed limits that they support. I do think there needs to be consistency and I do think that there are options in different streets around the city and we need to find the right speed limit. But what we've seen here today is the LNP who haven't even got the courtesy to stand up and contribute to a debate on what is an important issue for every single local councillor. There wouldn't be a single councillor in this room that is not lobbied about speed or dangerous driving every single day. We need more flexibility to determine an appropriate speed limit. We need more options available to us. We need to make sure that the speed limit is fit for purpose so that narrow streets have a lower speed limit, streets that have high pedestrian uses have lower speed limits. But most of all, most of all, we need to talk to our local communities and we need the tools available to us so that as a standard, it can be 30, 40 or 50 in these local streets. So I would say thank you to councillor Sri. I think he offered qualified support, I might say, if I can use that term, I don't want to speak for you, but I, I gather this would be your plan B if your plan A doesn't come up. So I would just say to all the councillors here before us today, this is a critically important issue for our community. It's so important that we have the flexibility in the tools available to our traffic engineers to get the right speed limit on the right road so that we can make them safer for drivers, safer for cyclists, safer for pedestrians, safer for children on the way to school, safer for the disabled. And we can make sure that we have an environment in which, in local and neighbourhood streets, the speed limit is fit for purpose. And I think we can do that if we have better options at a policy level available to us and we have the flexibility of 30, 40 or 50.
Your time has expired for you to write a reply. I'll now move to the vote on the amendment and I'll read it out. It is this councillor Johnston's amendment says this, Brisbane City Council supports changing the speed limit on all local and neighbourhood streets in areas with residential land uses to enable as standard 30 kilometre, 40 kilometre and 50 kilometre signage where the specified context makes this appropriate. This change would include, include local and neighbourhood streets or sections of streets where the prevailing land uses are low density, medium density or high density residential, but would not include areas where the prevailing land uses or land zoning is rural or rural residential. This motion does not propose any changes to roads designated as district suburban or arterial, arterial roads. Brisbane City Council resolves to initiate discussions with the state government to enact this change. That is the amendment motion. All in favour of the amendment motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston.
Division.
Seconded by councillor Tharangana. Noes to my left, ayes to the right, please.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being 20, uh, one in favour, 24 against and one abstention.
Can you read that again please, just to be sure?
Abstention.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being one in favour and 24 against.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on the substantive motion today, which I can proudly say from the outset of, as I said earlier today, we will not be supporting this motion. And I think people need to listen very clearly when they hear a push for 30 kilometre speed limits. They should read between the lines because this is not just about speed or safety. This is an anti-car agenda that lies beneath this. It is a policy that only the Greens could cook up and this comes from the councillor that wants us to shut every road that has water on it when it rains to cars. More than 90% of residents own cars in this city and we simply do not believe imposing a system on people where motorists' ability to get around their neighbourhood is restricted by unhinged and uncosted Greens' ideas. This motion as it stands does not even allow for consultation, straight out to implementation. This from the councillor for Woolongabba Ward last year, he was concerned about making sure there was citywide consultation on a fantastic tourism opportunity in the Mount Cootha Botanic Gardens, but this week it's straight out to 30 kilometres across the city in local and neighbourhood roads, no consultation. But let's go back and see what the history is on the Greens' Labour Alliance on here. And I noticed today that Labour hasn't spoken for or against this motion, so the, they did just vote with us on the amendment though. And I want to quote one of the councillors that we keep continuing to say needs to join us over here, and that is councillor Cumming. On the 10th of May in 2016, that said, reducing the speed limit, and that is at the time when he was the leader of the opposition, the days we miss Pete, the speed limit to 30 kilometres was ridiculously low and virtually impossible for motorists to comply with. And councillor Cumming, we totally agree. This is very different to areas of the examples that were given by councillor Sri Ranganathan, which was Burnett Lane, Albert Street, shared paths, people that are very much pedestrianised and shared pathways that are lower. But it is virtually impossible to comply with in a normal neighbourhood street. But despite this knowledge, we do know they pressed ahead for a 30 kilometre an hour policy in the last election and boy, did the public smack them down and rightly so. After a total pylon, which was essentially the Labour Party trying to be more like the Greens, let's be honest, it led to the architect of the policy, councillor Cassidy, say, the reaction probably isn't all that surprising, but I still think it has great merit. Well, it's not surprising because the people of Brisbane have spoken on Facebook and social media. However, councillor Cassidy's still committed to it and thinks it's a good idea. Chair, we're happy for the Labour-Green Alliance to say it as it is, we don't want a bar of it. And we agree again, as I said, with councillor Cumming, it's virtually impossible to comply with. And even as we heard here today, as the councillor for the Gabba Ward has changed and manipulated his debate today, he listened to my chat on Channel 7 and changed the angle of it, he changed it again with the deputy leader of the Greens' Labour Alliance, councillor Johnson, who always seems to be mopping up their motions, let's be real. That, no, maybe it's not every street, maybe it's not every local and residential street. Well, you know what, I would hope it is not every local and residential street because when it comes to that, that is more than 91,000 streets in Brisbane. The yellow, 91%, sorry, 91,000, 14,000, 91%. 91% of the streets. A blanket 30 kilometres is 91% of streets in Brisbane, over 14,000 roads. If you look on Google Maps, it's really easy to see, all the roads that are yellow are the non-local and district roads and the other 91% are the ones that would now be 30 kilometres an hour. The sheer scale and reach of this blanket policy cannot be underestimated. I've got an example in my local area. You know what else goes on roads and which we are really committed to being on roads is buses. And buses on roads, we need roads for buses. And the Buzz Upgrade Zone that goes through my ward, the 180, right now it takes 50 minutes. That's the quick trip from Garden City into town, 50 minutes. Can you imagine? Do we give an exemption that buses don't travel at 30 because if the 180 has to travel at 30 through the residential streets, that becomes a very long trip. And I don't think that's going to entice anybody to get out of their car and get into a bus because it's 30 kilometres. And councillor Sri said it himself, we want to get into the buses because it'll be so slow and so annoying to drive in a car at 30 kilometres an hour. He's not talking about speed and safety, Mr Chair, he's speaking about anti-car policy. That's what this is about. And the debate kept changing. Under this policy, they said it was a silly argument, but it's actually the reality, you speed up through a school zone. You speed up through the school zone. I've got a local school that is right in the heart of residential local areas, up to 40 k's through the school zones and down again. But let me be clear, Mr Chair, we are not obstinate and non-compromising when it comes to speed limits. We definitely look at speed limits and take the time to look at what is needed around the community. And as recently as June this year, we reduced eight streets in the Gasworks Newstead precincts from 50 to 40. We had five streets in South Brisbane Hospital precinct in the Woolongabba Ward that were reduced by 10 to 20 kilometres an hour. And there is a lever, there is the way to make sure this gets done where it needs to get done and that is the Speed Limit Review Panel. And if there is a street that really needs to be 30 kilometres an hour, it needs to go to the Speed Limit Review Panel because ultimately, we do not have the legislation.
Councillor Johnston, please.
We do not have the legislation to change the street speeds. We need to go to the Speed Limit Review Panel. And I note, the interjection councillor for Tennyson, who got the street reduced on Ipswich Road at Annalee, with the help from the mate, the minister from Transport, I can assure you, my residents, and I won't name names, always are yelling and abusing me when I talk to them in Taragindi about having to drive through 50 k's an hour on Ipswich Road.
Councillor Johnston, please. Councillor Johnston, please.
These need to be managed and they need to be managed in a balanced way, which is what the Speed Limit Review Panel does. Do I always agree with them? Absolutely not. I've got some streets I'd like to see reduced as well, as you know, Mr Chair, as a former infrastructure chair. We brought the CBD down to forty kilometres an hour from fifty. We saw the resulting crashes and crash numbers reduce, but we won't see a blanket thirty kilometres an hour across the city because, to quote councillor Cumming, it is virtually impossible to comply with. Even the minister for Transport, Mark Bailey, agrees with us. He said in June 2018 that the speed limits in the CBD were appropriate. In one of the highest pedestrian areas of the city, if not the highest pedestrian areas of the city, I doubt very much if the minister up there would be nodding his head at thirty kilometres an hour at the moment. Mr Chair, at the risk of giving this crazy idea any more time, I will wrap it here and we will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on the substantive motion today. Mr Chair, Labour has a strong record of campaigning to improve pedestrian and cyclist safety. Back in 2018, Labour was first on the record to call for thirty kilometre per hour speed limits and separated cycle lanes in the CBD. Those safety improvements at that time were mocked and ridiculed by the previous LMP Lord Mayor. And now we have seen this LMP Lord Mayor and all of the LMP councillors refusing to take any action on reducing the CBD speed limit to thirty kilometres an hour, let alone citywide. Labour councillors believe we should take a holistic approach to making Brisbane streets more accessible and friendly to support residents' active transport options and mobility issues. But it must be more than a simplistic thought to reduce speed limits to thirty kilometres citywide. We need a proper mobility plan for our city and suburbs. For many streets in our suburbs, they could be safer at thirty, forty or fifty kilometres per hour if there are suitable safety measures such as proper crossing points, separated spaces for cycling and safer footpaths. But speed alone is not effective. We need a holistic approach to improve the safety particularly in our suburbs. The focus must be on making our suburbs more walkable, more cyclable, rather than what we have seen today, an approach of thirty kilometres citywide. Mr Chair, Labour has been on the record supporting lowering speed limits in suburban streets, particularly in our local wards, and we've been effective in getting that change particularly to forty kilometres an hour. We also support lowering speeds to forty kilometres an hour in key neighbourhood hubs like schools, shops and public transport nodes. As well, of course, we still support, supporting the, reducing the speed limit in the CBD to thirty kilometres an hour. Mr Chair, Labour believes that pedestrians, cyclists and motorists all deserve safety on our road network, but we don't think a thirty kilometre citywide approach is the way to achieve it and we won't be supporting the motion today.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Any further debate? No further debate. Councillor Sir Ranganathan, write a reply.
Thanks Chair, sorry, I just checked texting in Joe. Thanks to everyone for participating in this discussion. It's nice to know where people stand and to get a clearer understanding of the landscape in terms of elected representatives' values and priorities. And thanks to councillor Johnson for seconding the motion and allowing this debate to come forward. I did just want to pick up on one or two pieces of misinformation in the deputy mayor's speech and highlight that Google Maps does not show which roads are local and neighbourhood roads versus higher order roads. There are quite a few streets on Google Maps that are...
Point of order.
Point of order to you Deputy Mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Thank you.
Sure. I think, and I'm sure she'll correct me if I go wrong, but councillor Adams intimated that it's all the roads that aren't yellow roads are the local and neighbourhood streets, and that's not correct. There's quite a number of streets which show up on Google Maps as white streets but are definitely not local or neighbourhood roads under the city plan classification. Just wanted to read briefly from an article in The Conversation, which is about busting myths about thirty kilometre an hour speed limits. I won't read the whole thing, but just this one paragraph, and these are from healthcare professionals and urban planning experts. And they just, just in this one section, they say, "The evidence is very clear, the chance of a pedestrian surviving when hit by a car skyrockets when the car's speed is reduced. The chance of survival jumps from just ten percent at fifty kilometres an hour to ninety percent at thirty kilometres an hour." And different studies have come up with slightly different figures and slightly different survival rates. But that's a pretty dramatic difference, right? If you get hit head-on by a car travelling at fifty kilometres an hour, you've got a ten percent chance of surviving. If you get hit head-on by a car that's travelling at thirty kilometres an hour, you've got a ninety percent chance of surviving. And I hope, Lord Mayor, Deputy Mayor, you'll at least take the time to reflect on those statistics and the research that's out there. And even if you don't want an entire default speed limit of thirty kilometres an hour on all local and neighbourhood roads, you'll at least think more deeply about where and we can start to reduce speed limits on a more systematic basis. Because the current approach that I've been dealing with for the last six or seven years is very slow and inefficient where you have to lobby continually for a speed limit review process to be undertaken and maybe eventually the speed limit on a short section or a particular corridor will be lowered by ten kilometres an hour. It's taking us a very long time at that rate to deal with all the safety issues across our city. There are so many roads where it's still just, it is not safe for pedestrians to cross the road, particularly in the evenings or when the lights pour. And it doesn't feel safe or comfortable even to be walking along the footpaths and dealing with fast cars turning around corners into side streets. I also just wanted to reiterate that the concerns about travel times are not based in fact. Some people here are dropping fifty kilometres an hour down to thirty kilometres an hour and they do the maths of how many metres they'd be travelling and conclude that it would impact travel times. But when you think about how cars currently move around our city, the big impacts on travel times are traffic congestion and the delays at intersections. But whether you're travelling from one set of traffic lights to another set of traffic lights at thirty kilometres an hour or at forty kilometres an hour or fifty kilometres an hour, it doesn't make a huge difference if the traffic light is still taking that same amount of time to change. And it doesn't make a huge difference if you're running into congestion. So those are the factors that materially impact travel times. Dropping speed limits of thirty kilometres an hour in the one or two streets at the start or end of a motorist's journey aren't going to materially impact travel times, but they will materially impact people's sense of safety and in practical terms, their actual safety. And I think that alone is enough reason to seriously consider this motion. I won't read all of them out, but I did want to read out some of the comments that I've had from residents in response to this proposal going up on social media. And I was, honestly, I was pleasantly surprised at how much support there was for this idea. Here's one from Kimberly, who I think used to live in Brisbane. She says, "I really hope this gets back up before we move back with our kids. I'm from Brisbane but living in Switzerland at the moment, where the vast majority of streets in our local area are thirty kilometres an hour. Kids from four years old walk to school, kids play in the streets. At five years old, my oldest started riding his bike with us on the street because it felt safe. It's one of the absolute best quality of life aspects and I really hope it'll be similar when we shift back home. Good luck." Sir Reece says, "I would just like to see the speed on Logan Road between Stones Corner and Greenslopes decreased. I have to walk between Gordon Street and the IGA in Greenslopes quite a lot and it's terrifying being a pedestrian on that road. Seems like everyone speeds." Just to clarify, this motion isn't proposing to drop the speed limit on Logan Road, but I do think there are sections of Logan Road that ought to drop to forty kilometres an hour at least. Johannes writes, "Thank you for bringing this to the table, Jono. I know for my dead-end street in Annerley, the kids sometimes play on the street, but cars do go by relatively fast, especially for such a small street with cars parked on both sides. Having a lower speed limit would make me feel more safe to interact with other residents of my street." Tadiana says, "Yes, I hope so and they shouldn't be encouraging traffic to flow through residential streets as they have with the hideous South City Square development. Could have made it, cars should take more care when turning, more traffic including semis in the middle of night use our streets, not happy." Ripwick writes, "As a road safety researcher in Queensland, I fully support this motion by Jonathan Sri Ranganathan, councillor for the Gabba, and expect that there will be not only great benefits in terms of safety but also in terms of economics and quality of life. Impacts on travel time are likely to be negligible. I hope that Queensland Labour, councillor Ryan Murphy, Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner support this policy to save lives on our road." Stephen writes, "My car just got written off parked on my suburban street. Second vehicle in that exact spot with that outcome. Children and pedestrians walk nearby often. Thirty kilometres an hour is the safe speed." Michelle writes, "Completely support this in inner city. Realistically do the maths..." Goes on about travel times. There's a few comments who are opposed to this and I'm not, like I said at the outset, yeah, I'll take that interjection from the Lord Mayor, there's a few. But honestly, and obviously I'm speaking on behalf of a particular constituency and I acknowledge that attitudes are going to vary across the city, but I'm confident now that the majority of residents within my ward support this change. We had a recent survey that backs that up as well. I'm sure there are vocal objectors and there's certainly a lot of people who don't want the speed limits to drop. But I can see that from the surveys I've done, from the conversations I've had with community groups and individual residents, and from the anecdotal commentary, which is not necessarily representative, but the comments I'm getting via emails and social media, that there's a lot more support than opposition for this change in the Gabba Ward. I don't presume to speak on behalf of everyone else across the city, but I hope that, Lord Mayor, you will at least accept at face value that what I'm saying is true and that the majority of Gabba Ward residents support this change for those smaller streets, those local and neighbourhood streets. If you have survey data to the contrary, please publish it. I'm happy to share the survey, I think some of the survey data's already been published. But there's a lot of support for this in certain areas. There's moderate support in other parts of the city and there's strong opposition in some parts of the city. Like I said, I'm not asserting that everyone across the city thinks this is a fantastic idea, but there's a growing amount of support for it and I think we will get there over time. And it's the constituencies like parents with small kids, like people with impaired mobility that I'm most concerned about in this conversation.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Just want to know if councillor Sri will take a question.
Sure.
Councillor Sir Ranganathan will take a question.
Yeah, look, for a guy who's made a career out of not following the rules, this is a pretty draconian imposition of rules on other people, given that you encourage people to break the law on a regular basis, why are you trying to impose a new rule and a new law and a new stricter law on everyone in Brisbane?
I mean, that's a weird, thanks. I think that's a weird question. I've never said I'm against rules. I think, I think, I think...
Allow the answer to be heard, please.
I think certain rules and laws are silly and I think we should have a mature conversation about which rules and laws are fit for purpose. But no, I think it would be good to have some lower speed limits and I think we already have speed limits and I think we can agree that speed limits are a good thing. The practical question is, what should the speed limit be set at? And the experts, the researchers who are professionals in this field, are telling us that thirty kilometres an hour would be good for these kinds of streets. I should note, and we don't have time to go into it in detail, but there's a lot of data emphasising the economic benefits of lower speed limits as well, not just because they improve commerce and activation in commercial precincts, but because the cost to the city and the cost to the community whenever someone is hospitalised or whenever someone is killed are dramatic. And if you model those economic benefits, you'll see that there's a significant benefit to lower speed limits in these areas as well. It's a shame we don't have time for more discussion about that aspect, but once again, I do hope...
Councillor Sri Ranganathan, your time has expired. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, your point of misrepresentation?
Yes, I didn't say that you could see where, that Google Maps showed you where the local roads were. I said the yellow roads you can see are clearly not local roads and the others are.
Thank you, thank you. We now move to the vote on this motion, which is as per the agenda. So with concurrence of the chamber, I won't read it out in full. I think we all know what the motion is. All in favour of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Division.
The noes have it. Division called by councillor Sir Ranganathan and seconded by councillor Johnson. Noes to my left, ayes to the right. Thank you. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being one in favour, twenty-four against and one abstention.
Thank you. To clear that motion, lost. Councillors, please return to your seats as quickly as you are able to. Thank you, councillors. We now return to other business, which is the Establishment Coordination Committee report. Lord Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 15th of August 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 15th August 2022, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I just have a question with respect to item B on the ENC report and it relates to the amendment to the confidentiality policy AP 212. It appears to me that council is removing the ability of this council chamber to release commercial in confidence information if it so chooses to do so and is delegating that power to the CEO and branch chairpeople only. I just wanted to confirm, Mr Chairman, that the local law can legally abridge the power of this council chamber as the ultimate decision-maker for council and remove that power from this council chamber legally.
My understanding, councillor Johnson, this isn't a meeting's local law issue, it relates to a council policy, but Lord Mayor, if you or a Chair want to reply to any of those points made by councillor Johnson, please feel free to do so. Lord Mayor.
Yeah, point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
This is the issue, can we legally approve something that abrogates the power of the council chamber? I don't know whether that's actually possible. So I just would like to be clear that if we are voting on this, that everyone is aware that council currently has the power to do it and that power is being removed. And whether or not legally, this council chamber then has no power to release information or decisions. So for example, Mr Chairman, we may have a report, and it's happened here before, where the Lord Mayor tables a report from the Ombudsman, which is required by law to do, which is confidential until the Lord Mayor tables it. But technically speaking, it may, you know, there are circumstances where this might happen. So I'm just wondering about the legalities of this.
Thank you. I'll seek further advice on the issues you raise. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Look, I know that councillor Johnson doesn't rate the offices of this council and regularly criticises them, but I can assure her that they wouldn't bring something that was illegal to this chamber. This is a policy that hasn't been...
Councillor Johnson, please.
This is a policy that hasn't been prepared by councillors, it's been prepared by our senior executives and signed off by our senior executives for consideration by this council. And I would simply say that they would not bring something forward that they know to be not lawful or illegal. So...
Councillor Johnson, please. Councillor Johnson, enough.
I just reflect on the debate we had. Isn't democracy a great thing? Batshit crazy ideas get voted down. It is a great thing and congratulations to the Labour Party on supporting a common sense approach here. We...
I think we've tolerated, we've tolerated that word sufficiently.
Did I say something wrong?
Lord Mayor, but I... Lord Mayor, but I ask you to rephrase.
Crazy ideas get voted down. We know that Labor has previously espoused this policy, but now have backed away from it. Sensible thing to do, because why? They were roasted by the community when they proposed such an overreach, and rightly so. We have a very clear and strong record when it comes to acting to improve safety in our community. We are a leader in that respect. We were the leader, the first CBD in Australia to introduce a forty-k an hour limit. Why? Because it was the right limit. It was a safe limit, and the results have been very clear that that is an appropriate limit. And even the Labor State Minister for Transport agrees that it's an appropriate limit. But, as I've said in the past, the thing about the Greens is that they're never satisfied. They are never satisfied. They're insatiable, because when you get an anarchist driving their agenda, they've got to bring the system down, and the laws have to be changed or ignored. And that's what we see here in action. And so councillor Sri, you might think you're very clever in pushing for this, but people are increasingly seeing just how off the charts your agenda is and the Greens' agenda is. And if people want sensible approach to civic management, if they want a sensible approach to safety, to supporting the environment and a sustainable city, then there's only one choice, and that is this administration, which has the runs on the board. And I just want to congratulate all the other councillors for taking a sensible approach in this debate. This week is Road Safety Week, and tonight we'll be lighting up the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Sandgate Town Hall, Tropical Dome, and Reddick Cliff Place in Yellow in support of this campaign. Annually, we run this awareness campaign, and it supports the many practical things that we're doing to improve road safety. Krista, or the deputy mayor, just pointed out, just a matter of weeks ago, we took action to reduce the speed limit in an evidence-based way on roads where it was appropriate. So the ability exists to do that, but, as I said, the insatiable hunger of councillor Sri Ranganathan and the Greens to constantly go further and to change, and it's never good enough, will continue to push their agenda out of touch of the people of this city. Tonight, we'll be lighting up the Story Bridge, Reddick Cliff Place, also Victoria Bridge and Tropical Dome in green and gold, because it is exactly ten years tomorrow to the Paralympic Games and the start of the Paralympic Games. We all celebrated ten years to the Olympic Games, well, at least, I think, twenty-six out of the twenty-seven councillors celebrated the ten years to the Olympic Games, but we should also rightly celebrate ten years to the Paralympic Games, which is a beacon for inclusivity and support for people with a disability, and an inspiration to the global community on what can be achieved despite incredible personal adversity. Tomorrow night, all of our assets will be lit up in blue and yellow to support Ukraine Independence Day. On the twenty-fourth of August, nineteen ninety-one, Ukraine officially declared itself as an independent country, and long may it be the case that it remains an independent country. I think we've all been shocked and horrified by the unlawful invasion of Ukraine, and we've also been incredibly proud and inspired by the efforts of Ukrainians to resist that incursion. I think many people thought that the war would not continue on, it would be a short war and lead to defeat, and we've all been inspired to support the efforts of Ukrainians to resist that unlawful incursion and unlawful war. On Thursday night, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit black, green, blue, and gold to recognise Australian South Sea Islander Day of Recognition. This marks the day the federal government officially recognised the South Sea Islanders as a distinct cultural group. On Friday, we light up our city assets yellow for Daffodil Day. As you know, Daffodil Day is the annual appeal from the Cancer Council, their flagship fundraising event, and obviously we continue to support that wonderful event, and we continue to support Cancer Council. Finally, on Saturday night, City Hall will be lit up in blue and white for the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Queensland Scottish Society. Are there any people with Scottish heritage in the room?
Yes.
McGlocklin, maybe? Mackay? So we're lighting up the assets in blue and white to acknowledge that important milestone. Also, just in recent times, I really wanted to mention what an honour it was to welcome five thousand eight hundred new citizens as Australian citizens last week in three ceremonies. It was Super Citizenship Week. We had ceremonies Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. The Monday night ceremony was here in City Hall, but then we went to the Convention Centre for the next two ceremonies, and we did that in acknowledgement that there was a considerable backlog that had built up during the pandemic in particular of people who were waiting to become new citizens. And the size of citizenship ceremonies during the pandemic had to come down. There were a lot that were cancelled or postponed, and so we stepped up and we organised the two biggest citizenship ceremonies in Australian history. In fact, the biggest Australian citizenship ceremonies in world history, in fact. No other country has done bigger Australian citizenship ceremonies than us. But we're proud to have helped clear that backlog and welcome those five thousand eight hundred new citizens into the local community as official members and Australian citizens. As the deputy mayor mentioned, tonight we kick off the Brisbane Fashion Festival, now in its fifteenth year, with events running over the next three nights and an important celebration of our local creative talent and our fashion industry. And I'm particularly looking forward to seeing what has been achieved in recent times. It's hard to think of too many more cutthroat and competitive industries than the fashion industry, given that they compete on a global scale. You know, customers in Brisbane have the choice of buying fashion either locally or from local designers or anywhere in the world, and it is highly competitive. And we should be very proud, and we should celebrate our local fashion designers, our local creatives, our local retailers, and everyone associated with the industry, because they do us proud in what is a highly competitive industry. And so we continue to support that event as an economic development initiative, and tickets have entirely sold out for this year's event, which is good.
But you can watch it online.
You can watch it online. Moving to the items in front of us, item A is the annual operational plan and quarterly financial report for June twenty twenty-two. Now, as we've spoken about many times before, council and other levels of government as well have been through some incredibly challenging times recently. If the pandemic wasn't enough, or one of the most costly floods in our city's history, we've also been hit with a massive inflation crisis on the cost of day-to-day goods and services. We've been hit with a skills shortage that affects our ability to, you know, carry out work in the community and build projects. And we've also been hit with the global supply chain issues as well, which make it incredibly difficult. So I don't think that there's a single business, or in fact even a single household budget, that has not had to adapt to the current circumstances we're in. There's no doubt about it, like, you know, every person in Brisbane is under pressure for different reasons at the moment, and they've been adjusting their household budgets. Businesses have been adjusting their budgets.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Motion for extension, seconded.
A, motion for extension of time is being moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landis. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And as I was saying, Mr Chair, we've had to make adjustments as well, and we've had to make many adjustments, because it's the right and responsible thing to do to keep the city's budget strong, to keep it balanced, and also to make sure we continue focusing on the important things. And obviously, right now, you know, we are very well funded when it comes to the flood recovery. Funding has been allocated in the budget, and now we have the challenges of actually delivering that investment when it comes to the supply chain issues, the incredible continuation of wet weather that we've had for months and months and months, unseasonable wet weather, thanks to Lanina, and also the challenges we're getting skilled workers and workforce, the challenges of the cost of everything going up. And so there are considerable challenges, but the people of Brisbane know they can count on us to adapt and respond to those challenges and continue to deliver despite the challenges. We won't give up. We won't lay down tools. We will get on with the job that we have been elected to do, and the rebuilding and recovery has been prioritised, and we'll continue to do that, together with all of the important basic services that people expect from us, and also the major infrastructure projects that are critical for our growth as a city. And so this quarterly financial report reflects some of those challenges, and they are real, and we table this report for the consideration of the chamber. Now, item B is an update to the city administration and governance policies. A council regularly reviews its policies to ensure good governance and mitigate risk, and that's all about protecting rate payers' interests. This submission seeks to update three existing council policies as part of these routine review and updates. The first is a security policy. A comprehensive review of this policy identified an opportunity to improve and clarify processes associated with security governance, physical security, personal or people's security, and information security as well. The policy enshrines principles in these key areas which will be supported by a security culture that encourages, educates, and enables consistent security management practice by all employees. Definitions, responsibilities, and accountabilities in these areas are now more appropriately outlined in a suite of security procedures which sits under this updated policy. The second policy is the risk management policy. Council undertook a review of our risk management framework to identify potential improvements, the effectiveness and consistency of these practices across council, and this has resulted in updates to the risk management policy procedures and supporting tools. Once again, the amendments more clearly articulate the key principles for effective risk management and confirms council's commitment to these policies. The final policy update is the confidentiality policy. Due to changes in the Right to Information Act, amendments to the policy are required to meet this legislative change. Isn't it interesting, the question from the independent councillor, oh, is this lawful? Well, the state law changed. We're adapting and responding to that state law, and that is appropriate that we do so. The update ensures that council continues to meet its legislative obligations of adequately protecting relevant information and also maintaining the good governance practices, including updating of appropriately designated persons. So I commend these three policies coming through to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further debate, councillor Landis?
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion for an afternoon tea break from councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We'll see you back here in fifteen minutes or so. Commences when all doors have been locked. Councillors, we're in E N C debate. Further speakers, councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on clause A and B. Mr Chair, clause A is the report card for the final quarter of the twenty-one twenty-two budget. Not one single program in this document is immune from incompetence, cuts, delays, and this L M P administration's city-centric approach. Mr Chair, under the City of Brisbane Act, the Lord Mayor has the sole responsibility for delivering a budget. Therefore, council's budget is a statement of this Lord Mayor's values and his priorities. We know that these L M P budgets have been getting worse for the people of Brisbane. The final look at the twenty-one twenty-two budget confirms our worst fears. Brisbane suburbs are totally forgotten by this L M P administration. This L M P administration had a twenty-three point three million dollar variance when it comes to stormwater infrastructure. It underspent because work is simply not being done. Residents may wonder how this L M P-dominated council could possibly underspend on any form of flood prevention or mitigation after the devastation we saw in February. Well, the reason provided for delaying the repairs of the February twenty twenty-two floods is because of the February twenty twenty-two floods. They are underspending in flood repairs because of the flood. You just simply can't make this stuff up, Mr Chair. It's there, plain and simple, in the documents. There is also ten million that was not spent on waste management. Imagine, Mr Chair, if we had a council that prioritised waste reduction on an industrial scale by introducing things like a full FOGO programme throughout the city, the recycling of the twenty-first century. It's clear we won't have that under the L M P when they can't even run their current waste management system on time or on budget. It's no surprise that there is higher expenditure for the Metro project again, given the cost blowouts to date. Councillor Cassidy warned just last week that the IT project for the Metro was one of the reasons the project was blowing out by hundreds of millions of dollars. These papers confirmed that today. We see three million dollars being overspent on green bridges at the expense of suburban bikeways. Jockham Street, Two Moreton Bay cycleway projects, North Brisbane Bike Way, all delayed or cancelled. This L M P's council's mantra was that it needed to cancel projects to repair flood damage. Well, this report card shows that they are in fact being delayed and cancelled to funnel cash into the green bridges because of that programme's cost blowouts. Then we see one of the green bridges has been delayed to line up the ribbon-cutting almost precisely with the next council election. No doubt, no doubt, we will see the Lord Mayor promoting this in twenty twenty-four at rate payers' expense, despite, once again, not being able to deliver a project on time or on budget. Projects like Gresham Street, safer school infrastructure, the Indrapili Roundabout, Norris Road are all delays, delays, delays. This administration has taken its eyes off the suburbs completely. Even where it looks like things might be going well, where expenditure is favourable or has been offset or reallocated, the devil is always in the detail. There was forty-seven million that was not spent in reconstructing bridges and culverts. Once again, we see chronic underspending in the suburbs. Mr Chair, people are suffering in the suburbs because of this Lord Mayor's political decisions. They are getting significantly less and paying more and more. This administration is not only cutting projects to fund flood recovery, repair, it's running behind on delivering anything. Let's look at the amount spent on ferry maintenance. It is behind the tune of three point one million, one point one million, five point six million, almost ten million combined. Almost ten million of ferry network variances that could have seen things like the construction of a Norman Park ferry terminal, gone. Not needed for flood damage and not reallocated to projects that could make a difference to the lives of local residents who are now going without things like public transport. We have seen what ten years of underspending did to our monohull ferries. They are off to get auctioned to the highest bidder, and rate payers miss out on services yet again. Mr Chair, off-road cycling, eradicated yellow crazy ants, wiping out weeds, off-leash dog areas, all these projects are being carried over into a new financial year. They were all re-announced in June as if they were new projects, but we have confirmed today that they are just more examples of this L M P incompetence. It is no wonder, Mr Chair, this budget saw the highest rates increase in the last ten years. Not only are residents paying more and getting less, this administration is still playing catch-up on works from previous financial years. Work supposed to be done by June thirty are now months overdue, and this year's projects will now be pushed out to next year or future financial years. Mr Chair, this council is also supposed to be the friend to small business, while this administration failed to spend almost a million dollars in supporting local business and the economy in the last financial year. Every page you turn is another page of broken promises and neglect of our suburbs. And let's just wind back to public transport yet again. The most disappointing part of this report, and probably the biggest slap in the face for council workers in particular, is in transport for Brisbane. The approved budget for twenty-one twenty-two expected an operating profit in transport, city cats and buses, of eleven million dollars. This review shows an operating profit after tax of twenty million dollars. That's an increase of nearly nine million. Yet bus drivers tell us they are taking home less pay than they did ten years ago. Despite winning meagre pay increases of two point five percent, the take-home pay of many permanent bus drivers has not changed in a decade. These pay increases... These pay increases are clawed back through roster changes with unique broken shift arrangements. The dollar figure on their pay slips is the same as 10 years ago. With inflation raging, it's harder to pay the bills, put food on the table and put their kids through school. This LMP administration fights tooth and nail to suppress wage increases of our bus drivers and at the same time, this administration is taking a $20 million operating profit tax out of public transport. Mr Chair, this is at a time when kids can't get buses to their school or residents are having services cut and rationalised on this Lord Mayor's watch. As I've said, a budget is a statement of a Lord Mayor's values and priorities. Adrian Schrinner's priorities are all wrong. He doesn't care about people, about our suburbs or our council's workforce, and this budget documentation confirms that yet again. Mr Chair, on clause B, the update to City Administration and Governance Policies, today we have a suite of policies that have been reviewed by this LMP administration and have received their endorsement. On our papers, it is clear that these are not necessarily substantive amendments as to the intent of any of those documents. There are, of course, layout and design amendments, that is pointed out in the papers for all of these policies. Maybe they are a bit more user-friendly to view, as they are all significantly shorter, but I guess this process also highlights what's not in the documents. When we look at things like the security documents, council's own policy talks about its commitment to providing a safe and secure physical environment for its people, information and assets. The new policy seemingly has removed things like a duty of care component that was present in the old policy, and begs the question, if we are concerned about the safety of our people, then why does this LMP administration not prioritise the safety of our employees like bus drivers? New data shows that there were 20 spitting offences against drivers in 2122, that was an increase on the financial year before. There are more occurrences of passengers verbally abusing drivers than ever before, and there were 13 incidents of objects being thrown at bus drivers, which rose from just two incidents in 2122, sorry, in 2021. Our team, as we've already said, we were recently at the Virginia Depot and we heard firsthand the horror stories from drivers about what they are forced to experience while just trying to do their job. It is all very well for Brisbane buses to have partial or fully enclosed screen, but Labour has been on the record time and time again demanding extra security measures like full encapsulation on some routes. Prioritising Brisbane City Council bus driver safety is not high on this LMP administration's agenda, and this paring back of our security policy doesn't seem to take these issues into account. The confidentiality and risk management policies are very broad. Labour does not hold great faith in this confidentiality policy to properly provide guidance on how to appropriately deal with material identified as confidential by this council. In a context, Mr Chair...
Councillor Cook, sorry, your time has expired.
Yeah, I move for an extension.
Councillor Griffiths has moved the extension of time, and seconded by councillor Strunk. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cook.
Mr Chair, the confidentiality and risk management policies are not adequate when this LMP administration has a history of covering up its incompetence, lacking transparency and accountability through these very policies and processes. We have all, certainly on this side of the chamber, tried to obtain information, as have our residents, about issues of what we consider public interest, only to receive documents heavily redacted and unable to make sense of. This LMP administration goes to the extreme when it comes to hiding the truth and releasing information. This LMP council has a history of covering up information when it's not to their benefit. We don't trust this council to not abuse the processes and power that these policies confer, and we will not be supporting these policy amendments today. In some ways, these documents don't go far enough to offer protection, and in others, they appear intentionally vague, allowing for a potential improper use of power. Neither of those things are becoming of an administration that is meant to support and represent the people of this city openly and transparently.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item A and item B today. The quarterly financial report shows the approved budget as at 3BR against the year-to-date results, while the annual operational plan progress report records variances in the delivery of the annual plan. Mr Chair, we've heard it here today, the opposition has been living under a rock. What supply chain crisis, what labour market crisis? The same crisis that their federal and state colleagues absolutely acknowledge that exists. They are living in denial. The numbers in this report tell a story about how council responded to the pandemic and how we are working through the significant challenges of the aftermath of the devastating floods and the difficult market conditions across multiple sectors that we face ourselves. The increase in rates and utilities revenue in the past financial year reflects the over $30 million in rates rebates we provided the previous financial year, offset in part, of course, by our floods rebate as well. There was a modest increase in fees and charges revenue, noting the waivers and the fee reductions we implemented the previous year to support our residents. The increase in contributions, donations, subsidies and grants is in large part due to the receipt of capital grants revenue from other levels of government, including for the state-sanctioned Brisbane Metro project. This was offset by decreases in infrastructure charges of $13.5 million due to lower levels of developer activity last year. Who would have thought, in the middle of a pandemic, there was less developer activity? The main driver for lower revenue in the financial year was the delay in recognition of $120 million in contributed assets from the state government to council for the Rockleigh to Dara Stage One project. This was previously anticipated to be recognised in 2122, but is now not anticipated until 2223. To the detailed programme results, as the Lord Mayor has said, the impacts of the pandemic, the floods, the war in Ukraine and all of the flow-on effects that these factors have created in terms of supply chain difficulties, an incredibly tight labour market, all the while with escalating inflation. Our residents feel these pressures, and of course, an organisation the size of Brisbane City Council is not immune to them. In addition to February and March's severe weather, we also had an unseasonably wet May, which impacted our capital delivery. To Programme Eight specifically, in city governance, there are two main variances in the report that I want to highlight. The first is a reallocation from capital to expense for the counter-disaster operations project within city resilience, which is made up of council's immediate flood response activities. The second is in the property management line item, where there is lower capital expenditure due to a delay in the settlement of blocks as part of the Manipi Golf Course project, with these now expected to settle in the current financial year. Mr Chair, on item B, it's important for the good governance of our city that council's corporate policies are contemporary, and as part of that, our regular reviews, there are also updates to three policies in the City Administration and Governance Division. By doing this, Mr Chair, we are effectively managing and reducing our risk exposure. The first policy update is for the security policy. The proposed amendments are aligned to the Australian Government Protective Security Policy Framework. The updated policy focuses on principles under four areas. Security governance is about compliance with the Federal Security Policy Framework and the internal structures and procedures to manage security risks across the organisation. Physical security is focused on the physical controls and restrictions to protect council assets from being made inoperable or inaccessible or being accessed, used or removed without appropriate authorisation. People or personnel security refers to our people and ensuring appropriate vetting and managing, documenting and reviewing individual security obligations and processes, particularly those occupying high-risk positions with significant security risk exposures. Finally, information security focuses particularly on our cybersecurity management systems and strategies, something that is only becoming more and more important. Across these areas, the actions must be supported through fostering a security culture within council, to educate our staff and deliver consistent security management practices across the organisation. The definitions, responsibilities and accountabilities for this policy area now sit in a suite of related procedures, all of which are guided by the principles of this policy. The second policy, Mr Chair, is the risk management policy. The proposed amendments are the result of a comprehensive review of council's risk management framework, which has resulted in updates to the risk management policy procedures and supporting tools. The proposed amendments ensure the policy is fit for purpose to council's organisational and government requirements. Amendments to the policy and supporting procedures have been designed to improve clarity with respect to the accountabilities and responsibilities for risk management. The proposed amendments also improve alignment with relevant standards, which have been updated since the last change to the policy. The final policy, Mr Chair, is the confidentiality policy. This is a very, very minor update to an existing policy, and as the Lord Mayor said, it was driven by changes to the Right to Information Act, and the amendments were required to ensure council is compliant with legislative changes. The policy also updates the definition of an appropriately designated person under the policy. Mr Chair, I commend these to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak, thank you, I rise to speak on item A and item B. Firstly, on item A, I am grossly appalled by the failure of the LMP administration to deal in a substantive way with the February 2022 floods, and neither the Lord Mayor nor the Deputy Mayor is present in the chamber now, but this quarterly review that's been brought forward today highlights the shameful failure of this council to deal with flood recovery in the city. Just a quick look at what's happened shows that the budget cuts allocated to deal with the floods have been cut even further. There have been massive underspends on fixing up flood damaged bridges, culverts and drainage, $48 million. Park flood recovery, underspend of $10.5 million. Pontoons, jetties and seawalls, an underspend of $5 million. An underspend of $25 million on open drainage rehabilitation. That's fixing drains, that's clogged drains, they're everywhere in my ward, everywhere in my ward. That's just cleaning out clogged drains. And retaining walls and roads, $3.5 million. Now, that's money that was allocated for flood recovery purposes that has not been spent. That is a damning indictment of this LMP administration, and we can see on the ground today and every day in my ward that nothing is happening. I've got massive amounts of drainage that are blocked, I've got huge amounts of rubbish from the river and the creek, clogging up drains everywhere, and this administration has done nothing. Just getting them to actually focus and go out and look at an open drain and identify that there's a problem has required me to traipse into open drains, take photos and send them through, because the council officers can't even find them! I cannot believe how much this LMP administration is failing the residents of Brisbane, and there is no greater example of this than the Lord Mayor earlier today. I asked the Lord Mayor a question about flood road recovery, right? Because I put questions on notice two weeks ago and the answers were provided a week ago. Those answers said very clearly that council has still not even finished undertaking an assessment of the flood damaged roads in the city. Six months this weekend it will be since the flood, and this council has not even finished its assessment. Now, in the answers to the questions on notice, it does identify that there are 75 roads that have been identified as needing resurfacing because they're flood damaged, eight of which are in ALP areas. The others, oh, there's none in your area, councillor Sri, and there's none in my area. I've got nine of 10 flooded suburbs, yet not a single road in Tennyson Ward apparently is worthy of being resurfaced. Meanwhile, Oxley Road is falling apart, it's had so much water on it, it's glued back together and the gluing's come undone, it carries 33,000 vehicles a day, and it's not even been identified for repairs, and it's one of dozens of roads in my ward. How is it, how is it that six months after the floods, this council can't even say definitively, yes, we've got a list of all the damaged roads in the ward? I can tell you they are everywhere. And then this Lord Mayor stands up and absolutely, absolutely, and I think he didn't even know, but is untruthful, untruthful about the situation when it comes to identifying just the roads. The other questions on notice show there's still about 20 places where the barbecues haven't been fixed, including multiple locations in my ward. This is about six months on, just getting the electricity restored to council barbecues, heritage-listed district access park that has thousands of people in it every week at the Sherwood Arboretum, and the barbecues don't work! Six months on! Now, we know why, because this council can't spend the money it allocated to fix things. $10.5 million allocated for flood damage recovery in parks, and it's not spent. That is a reflection of this administration's failure to do its job. This administration has to go, its time is up. This Lord Mayor has, it's like the floods didn't even happen in this city. I actually put a request in to have a look at the documents that the Flood Recovery Task Force, being chaired by councillor Wines, has done. I wanted to see what the agendas were, what the minutes were, what the action items were. Do you know what I got back today? One PowerPoint presentation about ferry terminals. Six months on from the floods, the Flood Recovery Task Force has had one PowerPoint presentation. And if it's not true, that means this council's deliberately hiding any other documents that it might have. So let's be clear, this administration has categorically failed the residents of Brisbane. In a week's time, it is spring. We know that the weather forecasts are already diabolical for this summer, and there is expected to be further severe weather implications across the city. I have no confidence that this administration will have delivered on flood recovery for my area, and it's clear in this budget that they are unable to. Now, I can see that on the ground, the council officers are not there to do the work, they've been gutted by a reorganisation of the council bureaucracy, and even, even, even the tree person who's supposed to be responsible for my ward says, jeez, I can't do it councillor, I'm actually looking after three wards. There are, there is a massive failure of this LMP administration, it starts with their reorganisation, they've centralised control and power in news, and things aren't getting done. Things are not getting done. After six months, if you can't connect the power back to the barbecues, you've got a problem. If you can't even identify where the flooded roads are, you've got a problem. And if you cannot clean out the drains so that they are functional and working before the summer storm season starts, then you've got a massive problem. How is it that this council can't even clean the drains out? This Lord Mayor has to go. He cannot be trusted to do the basic work that this city needs in a time of crisis. This LMP administration want to say, oh, it's all the officers' fault and I'm criticising the officers. The leadership of this council has let the residents of this city down. They are idling along, cruising along, all they want to talk about is the Olympics and the Metro, and the Olympics are 10 years away, when we've got residents who've got blocked drains at the end of their street now, weeks out from when it's going to start raining again. And what's this administration do? Nothing, nothing. I am appalled at the lack of action from this administration. This is not a one-off, but in this case, their catastrophic management of this city's budget, of its resources, of its actions, it just... budget, of its resources, of its actions, it just shows that they have no awareness of the situation we are dealing with here today. I do want to speak very briefly on item B. I will not be supporting item B. Firstly, I'll just say that the change in the confidentiality policy seems to give more power to the CEO and the bureaucrats. Now, that, that's, that's the legacy of this administration. They have delegated away all of their authority, and they haven't noticed the correlation between the failure to deliver on basic services in the city and the fact that they keep delegating powers off. I mean, it's just shocking. So I'm not going to be supporting this. We know, and I know, that there is an LNP councillor who made a complaint to the CEO of council, their name hasn't been revealed yet, but it will, I suspect it might be councillor McLaughlin, and as a result, the CEO of Brisbane City Council made a complaint about me for a tweet three years ago. Wasn't confidential, knock mark confidential. I got permission to release it, and meanwhile, the CEO of this council is wasting probably hundreds of thousands of dollars pursuing an issue that I am fairly certain-
Point of order, Mr Chair. Is this really relevant to the report?
It is. Because I've read the policy.
And if it, if it is, I'd like, I'd like to know where in the report it is.
Yeah, look councillor, councillor Johnston, we give you, we give you a fair bit of latitude in this place, but if you could please link it back to what we're actually discussing here.
It's pretty clear I'm saying that this CEO doesn't deserve any more power under these policies.
Thank you councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Strang and Arden.
Thanks Chair. Just rise to speak on item A in the financial report. Hope the Lord Mayor's listening to this via the system, or maybe the Deputy Mayor's listening, but I, I just wanted to drill down into one specific element that I'm seeing as a local councillor, and I'm sure other councillors are seeing and experiencing this too, which is just that the cost of delivering local projects via our suburban enhancement fund budget seem to be rising quite dramatically. So as one example, we had a traffic calming project on a local street, and we allocated a pretty significant chunk of money to it, and then the council officers came back and said they need another $50,000 for it, and they came back and said, actually, we need $80,000 more, because it's traffic calming, I get the costs are rising, but costs are rising quite significantly, and we all see that, we see that in, in terms of all the different projects that we're administering through our local ward budgets. But with other areas of council spending and other council budgets, if projects are running over budget or costs are rising, more money is allocated to those projects or to those spending areas. And that doesn't happen with the suburban enhancement fund money. That it seems to be one of the few areas of council spending where that budget is really quite fixed per year, even if costs are expanding massively. And it's gotten to the point now where, you know, we were quoted $400,000 for a public toilet block the other week, and we can't afford to do that out of our SEF even though we really want to go ahead with that project. So there's a problem here where, in some cases, projects that are already in train, where maybe money's been allocated and then the community's been told the project's going ahead, and then the costs come back at significantly higher, or there are projects that we've wanted to do for some time, but now the costs are increasing so significantly. I'm sure LNP councillors would be grappling with this as well, and I would suggest to the mayor and to the deputy mayor and to the finance chair, and perhaps it is worth looking as part of the next budget review whether the money for SEF can be increased. I know that money gets moved around, we can see it in the reports, projects get, get more money allocated to them. I think it's worth looking at that seriously, because the, the reality is that as costs increase, our capacity to deliver projects is, is getting really tight. So LNP councillors, I know some of you are listening to this, just maybe, maybe have a respectful chat to the mayor and say, look, if all our costs are going up, why not increase that, that allocation or add on, like we did that with Covid, where there was that sort of desire to get some more projects out on the ground quickly, and the council was able to create that extra emergency pot of money to get some, what was it called? Was it stimulus? But I can't remember.
That's true.
Yeah, they, they chucked a bit of extra money towards the local ward offices to be able to undertake those local projects a bit quicker. Given the rapidly rising cost of materials and labour and everything else, I think it might be a good time to do a similar thing now. So Deputy Mayor, I hope, I hope you'll take this on board. It's not a criticism of the LNP, it's just an observation, is what I'm seeing as a local councillor, is that every year we're told, oh, if you need a new footpath, use your suburban enhancement fund, if you want a new playground, use your suburban enhancement fund, if you want some bike lanes, use the suburban enhancement fund. We're told that there are all these things we need to spend that money on, but the budget is, is not big enough to cover the costs of those, those basic projects. So hopefully that's something that the team can look at and, and we can see a little bit of movement in that direction. The other thing I wanted to suggest to the council administration to consider is that as the cost of those minor projects increases, it might also be worth rethinking the thresholds for sole source tendering. And I offer this suggestion with some caution, because I, I'm mindful of what, I understand why we have tendering processes, and I understand the risks if council officers can allocate really large contracts to businesses without going through proper tendering processes. But we have a, we have a threshold where we say, look, if, if a project is estimated cost lower than this amount, we can just go to a single supplier because we know, we've worked with them before, we know roughly what it's going to cost, and go to that sole supplier track. Maybe we should be raising that threshold a little bit so that more projects can happen quicker without council officers having to go through longer tendering processes, during which time costs can increase further, delays etcetera, etcetera. There was one, I think it was a park bench or some park furniture or something, where if, if we'd gone out to a sole source, we could have gotten it done pretty quickly because there was a supplier, but then by the time we'd gone out to tender, costs had risen, and, and the eventual cost of the project came back a lot higher. So sometimes it is quicker to just say, all right, this is a simple straightforward project, we know how much it costs, let's just go through it with a sole supplier and avoid too much bureaucracy. Maybe there's, there's a case, and I just offer this as a suggestion, maybe there's a case for increasing those thresholds and amending the, the circumstances and the criteria under which officers can go through that quicker process, rather than having to put out every single little SEF project to tender, because that's taking a lot of time, it's adding to cost, it's adding to council officers workload, and, and it doesn't seem particularly efficient to me. Obviously, I'd prefer that more of these projects happen in-house, but at, at the very least, I thi-, yeah, exactly. At the very least, I think this merits some consideration, so hopefully that can be taken on board as well. Thanks.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers? Any further speakers?
Yes.
Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, I rise to support both the Greens councillor and both the independent councillor and what they are saying in relation to the financial report. It's disappointing that the administration councils, no one's speaking up. I wonder if that's how their party room operates too, that no one speaks up about anything, they're told what to say and they say it like puppets. We've seen that with the federal government.
Councillor Griffiths, can you get on to the items before us please?
I appreciate you not wanting me to mention Scott Morrison, but we've seen that with the federal government.
Councillor Griffiths, to the items before us please.
These are, these are the mates, these are the mates of Scott Morrison here.
Councillor Griffiths, please, to the items before us.
Oh, they love Scotty. They love Scotty, look at them talk. Anyway, I will get back to the, to what I was talking about. In terms of neglect, in terms of neglect, and I, I just pointed councillor Marx isn't in the room, I know the Lord Mayor isn't in the room for the record, but this is really important, the way we have ignored what is happening. This is, sorry, it's, I'm being interrupted. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor Griffiths, you've got the floor.
Yep. It is really important, the way that our industrial areas, the way these areas that service the city and people live on the edge of industrial areas in my ward, have been ignored since the floods seven months ago. And I drove a couple of officers down, officers down with, with one of my staff members to show them the extent of neglect, and they wouldn't answer or couldn't answer what service standard they had to provide there. But can I say, it is almost like a third world country, the way we have neglected some of those industrial areas. It is almost like a third world country, it's like a bomb has gone off. And it's businesses who are coming to me and saying, why, we're paying all these rates, why is this council ignoring us? And go, well, that's interesting, they're supposedly the council of small business, they keep telling us that. They're not. You aren't. You aren't delivering for them, you're failing them. There are roads falling apart, there are footpaths falling apart, there are dangerous holes in the footpath that I reported that don't get fixed. Waterways are overgrown and full of debris, there's rubbish, there's weeds, there's graffiti, there's dump cars, and you're saying you're the party of small business. Just hop in the car with me, I will show you the sites that you neglect in this city. I will show you the sites you, you neglect in this city. And I'm happy for you to come to a Chamber of Commerce meeting and meet with these business owners and explain to them why they're paying so many rates. I know liberals don't go to public meetings with Labour councils, but pay, why they pay so many rates-
Councillor Adams please.
Why they don't pay, why they pay so many rates and get such poor service. And just recently, I received a briefing about our restructure for our delivery, and I listened for 15-
Point of order Chair.
Point of order to you.
Just relevance, where is this, like, what are we, what's happening? We're going around the world here, we're doing a general business, can we, we could do a general business later, but I just, can we talk to the report on this one?
Thank you councillor, you're now debating the point of order, but councillor Griffiths, I do draw you back to the question of relevance in relation to the items before us.
Let's go through it, let's go through the, the clean green budget, let's look at that, let's look at land management remediation, or let's look at conservation reserves, or let's look at road delivery. Does this chairperson have no idea what this council does? He wants to run away, he doesn't want to have a debate, he doesn't want opposition councillors to raise these issues. I think it's good for you to hear these issues, because you're not out there doing anything. And council officers want to deliver, but they're telling me they have to go from one end of the city to the other to see a job. And where we used to work with a team of people, we now work with one person who is essentially, a very nice person, a glorified correspondence officer. A glorified correspondence officer. And if you don't think that these changes aren't being felt on the ground, you have no idea, you have no idea how bad it is out there in terms of your delivery. And I get what you're doing, you're separating yourself from the operation of council. You're the great council, and the workers are over there doing it. Unfortunately, we're here to be representing residents, or unfortunately for you, we're here representing residents to speak up for residents. That's actually a job. That's actually all our jobs, and at the moment, we're missing the mark as a council. It's embarrassing, but when I see the antics of what went on federally, I understand what's going on now.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you.
I don't know what's going on, the relevance to the annual policy please, not about field services policy and changes of process, the actual report before us.
Point of order. I've finished.
Only if it's relevant.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I, councillor Griffiths, have you finished?
You've finished.
You've finished, okay, thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers? Okay. We now move to the vote on the E and C report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Johnston. Ayes to the right, noes to the left.
Yeah. (noise)
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 6 against.
Thank you, I declare that carried. Deputy Mayor, economic development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 16th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it was moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 16 August 2022 be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I'm a little gobsmacked that we just debated on policies in E and C that are legislative changes and they voted against it, but I will go on to-
To the report.
No, I can go around the world, I can go around the world on some of those legislative reports, because it was about procurement and the changes in procurement, and we're very, very proud in economic development that we are supporting our social enterprise and we are supporting our local buy, which I think council claiming over 84% on most months in our local buy. So these are policies that do change, they do change from time to time, based on legislative requirements, and that's what we saw here today, but those opposite are too dense to understand that. However, what we can understand is the great success that we see.
Point of order, if you can. That is unacceptable. My background is special ed teacher, you don't correct someone dense.
Yeah, councillor Adams, if you withdraw that comment please.
I'm happy to withdraw that comment, I'll think of a better one next time, but-
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Yes, the, the policies we've just debated, which clearly the Deputy Mayor doesn't understand, are about security, risk management and confidentiality, they've got nothing to do procurement, so I'm not quite sure what she thinks she's debating, but it's not what was on the agenda.
Thank you councillor Johnston, you're now debating the point of order. Councillor Adams to the report please.
Thank you, and again, I'll talk about economic development then, just a little bit longer, which is very important about government policies and the changes in government policies, like in procurement, which we see from time to time, and we change our procurement policies to support economic development and business, but those, those opposite, bar councillor, to me as of course, obviously don't fully comprehend that these are legislative requirements, they can't get past their political mantra to understand the changes that are made in legislative policies from time to time. What I have before me today is to talk more about the Business Hub, which is a fantastic policy and a fantastic initiative by Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner and the Schriner administration to deliver the most small business friendly council in Australia. With our Brisbane Business Hub's business support partners, I'm sorry, Mr Chair, I'm being interrupted. We have 156 designated facilitators, we have delivered workshops and provided export advice and support to business owners, we have more than 13,100 database contacts now, we have 66,700 website visitors over the last 12 months, more than 32,000 social media followers. This is a business support community like no other in Brisbane, Queensland or Australia, and it continues to grow. We have actually formally over 6,000 formal members. So the report before us last week showed us that our ongoing success is continuing to grow, particularly in the categories of events and workshops, the attendees at the workshops, the number of drop-ins and the number of mentoring sessions. And I have to say, I've always been very proud of our call centre and the work that they do there in supporting our local community, and we all know as local councillors how much our residents love the call centre, they also love libraries, I think libraries get fairly high as well, but there's not been an event that hasn't gotten over 95% support from the attendees in the Business Hub this year. So that is a fantastic outcome. And can I say, can I take this opportunity to thank the team of Brisbane Economic Development Agency, in particular, the manager of the Business Growth Talent and Industry Trades, and that is Miriam Kent, who does the most amazing job and presented to us last week. And just so you don't forget what's on in the next week at the Business Hub, WIN Government Business, a $6 billion opportunity, that's by GovReady, a very exciting new SME, supporting other businesses to get into the profitable government revenue streams at council, state and federal government. On the 25th of August, the On the Count with Beth Mitchell, a networking event held once a month with an invited guest speaker, and this one Beth Mitchell, well, Mitchell will- And this one Beth Mitchell, well, Mitchell will experience her Brisbane Portrait Prize and her recent commission with Brisbane City Council. And then also on the twenty-fifth at ten a.m., the First Nations Business Frontier, Opportunities Past, Present and Future. And that will be led by Prime Effect. It's a panel workshop with First Nation business leaders who'll discuss their learnings, winnings, setbacks and opportunities with other business owners. So the opportunities and the wins and the learnings at the Business Hub are absolutely endless. And again, as I do every week, I ask the chambers to make sure they're making, letting their local businesses know of the, just the drop-in centre, if it's nothing else than that, and attend some of the workshops. But congratulations to the team on the outstanding work they're doing.
Thank you. Further speakers? Counselor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to rise to speak briefly on the one and only item in the economic development of the city and the Olympics portfolio, which is the Brisbane Business Hub, which I suspect has had more presentations in this council than pretty much anything else. But I, I have to rise on this because I was a little bit confused about what legislative changes that we weren't getting. I thought, is there something in here that I'm unaware of? But there's not. So.
Counselor Johnston to the item before us, please.
Yeah, I am to the item. The item before us today is about the Brisbane Business Hub. And the Deputy Mayor stood up and said, we all don't know what we're talking about. But the only matter before us today in this item is some stats on social media for the Brisbane Business Hub. Now, if there's some secret legislative changes that the Deputy Mayor is undertaking while she's not on a junket to South Korea, perhaps she'd like to bring them into the chamber so we can all hear about them. But based on what she's brought to the chamber today, there's a few social media stats here and some of them are actually quite illuminating.
Counselors in silence, please. Any conversations, please take them outside.
Point four, the Brisbane Business Hub. There've been thirteen thousand plus database contacts, sixty-six thousand website visitors, thirty-two thousand social media followers. And the social, sorry, the business support community is six thousand members. Yet council's events for the year, On the Couch Series, there were five hundred and eighty-two attendees. Now, if you take six thousand members, that's less than ten percent of people who are actually, who are your members that are actually coming to your events. Now, I'm not sure that's something to be proud of. I'd be asking the question about why are there that many people perhaps having some contact with council, but then aren't actually coming to the events that council is putting on? So I found it quite interesting that the Deputy Mayor put all these figures in. But the reality of it is less than ten percent of the people attending the events that she's spruiking in this report are actually members of the Brisbane Business Community. I think the big issue we've got here in Brisbane at the moment is that this administration is failing to recognise how we can stimulate the economy for everyone. And that is, we need to get on with flood recovery in the city. And the failure to do so means that not only is the economic activity level in the city struggling, we're seeing the failure to deliver on, on the ground services. Now, that's impacting on small businesses everywhere, out my way, small business people. Some had their businesses flooded, their homes flooded, and there's just zero support coming from council. My, my question would be, has there been a single, a single On the Couch Series about flood recovery for small business? Has, I, I know the Small Business Commissioner's been out there working hard, setting up flood hubs and with her team, doing her best to make sure small businesses are supported. But I'd like to know what Brisbane City Council's been doing. Because it seems to me that we've heard from the Deputy Mayor, the upcoming events are about artwork and Indigenous First Nations, which may be very interesting. I don't know enough about it, but about what's being presented. But I'd be pretty certain that the artwork issue is probably not top of mind. So to be fair, I don't think this reflects the success, the success story that Counselor Adams thinks it is. And I suggest she spends more time doing her job than going on junkets overseas as she's done the whole time that she's been a councillor in this place, with very little return for the city of Brisbane.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And I'll just make it clear, obviously, as a chair in this place, which Counselor Johnson probably doesn't realise, as she never has been one, is that you can talk around the world in your report. And I'll give her a credit. She missed out two weeks ago. She had to say something about the travel. But I am proud to be representing the city, to make sure we're engaging with cities around the world for best practice on what we get out of twenty thirty-two. And what we do need to get out of twenty thirty-two is supporting our local businesses and the Business Hub, which sees over nearly six hundred people turning up to just the On the Couch Series. That doesn't count the workshops and the mentoring and the other events. Just the On the Couch is ten percent. And the online for those who work out of hours and the on-call that are out of hours as well. This is a good news story and the bitter and twisted councillor for Tennyson needs to understand that we are working hard on flood recovery and this is a very important part of it.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any contrary, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Counselor Murphy, Transport Committee Report, please.
Thanks, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee Meeting held on Tuesday, the sixteenth of August, twenty twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Murphy and seconded by Counselor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee Meeting dated Tuesday, sixteen August, twenty twenty-two be adopted. Counselor Murphy? No? Thank you. Further speakers? Counselor Johnston.
Well, that's illuminating, isn't it? The metro project's got so bad, the chairman doesn't even want to talk about it. The item before us today is about changes to the Brisbane Metro Cultural Centre Station, which is a part of the, of the botched, the botched Brisbane Metro Project. And the chair's even walked out. This is his own area. So he doesn't want to talk about it. This is the LMP's signature project and has been for multiple elections. And the chairperson responsible has, doesn't want to speak about it and has just walked out of the chamber. This project has just gone from bad to worse. And I just want to put on the, on the record some concerns about this specific part of the project. And that relates to the changes to the new Cultural Centre Station. So originally, this was supposed to be an underground new station. And it was going to provide a new underground point for vehicles, bus, buses? Yeah, Big Bendy buses, you know, on the metro route. Now that got junked. So now we have the terrible solution where the busway ends at Melbourne Street. There is a surface solution, which is already terrible for pedestrians, terrible for cyclists. And now we're going to have all these buses crossing into a new at-surface busway stop at the Cultural Centre. I just want to put on the record my concern now about the pedestrian connectivity to this. I note in this that it is an at-grade solution for pedestrians, which means that we're going to have pedestrians crossing the road at Melbourne Gray and Gray Street at South Brisbane. There is an overpass for Q-PAC at the moment, but that's, that's designed to facilitate movement, limited movement. It strikes me that this administration has failed to present a safe cycling solution to support active travel to the busway at the Cultural Centre. And I want to put on the record my concerns about the overall project, which I have many times, but specifically council's failure here to design pedestrian-friendly access to the Cultural Centre bus stop. And I feel that a lot of pedestrians are going to be put at risk here because of the poor design and the at-grade solution that is being offered by the administration.
Thank you. Any further debate? No further debate? Counselor Murphy?
Thanks very much, Chair. Just briefly wanted to thank and pay tribute to Nelson Savan, one of my policy liaison officers in active transport. Previously, I was working for Lime. RACQ has worked in a number of professional capacities for a number of elected officials over many years. And this Friday will be his last day working for myself and the Lord Mayor. And I just wanted to thank him for the work that he's done for active transport policy and projects in our city during the time he's been working at City Hall and wish him well into the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on the Transport Committee Report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Wine's Infrastructure Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee Meeting held on Tuesday, the sixteenth of August, twenty twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Wine and seconded by Counselor Maddick that the report of the Infrastructure Committee Meeting dated Tuesday, sixteen August, twenty twenty-two be adopted. Counselor Wine.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The report to the committee last week was about innovation, sustainability in the circular economy. And it's part of council's ongoing commitment to recycling and reuse within our road network in particular. The presenters spoke to a range of tools and inputs that we use to decrease waste and try to restore and regenerate and extend the life cycle of products that we buy once but reuse many times. It allows waste to be repurposed into a usable resource. The, one of the best examples that we use in our system is the recycling of asphalt, glass, soft plastics, crummed rubber, crushed concrete and how they're reused in asphalt and concrete footpaths. As it's been a long focus of this organisation to have a sustainable management system. And our roads, while they're susceptible to environmental deterioration and require extensive maintenance, the repurposing of materials within them extends the life of those surface minerals and reduces demand for raw materials, decreasing landfill, lowering carbon emissions and also lowering the call on, on the council's quarries. In financial year twenty-one, twenty-two, fifty-four thousand tonnes of reclaimed asphalt pavement was used in council's road projects. Brisbane continues to be a leader in this space. And we have a dedicated process for the last thirty years where we will use twenty percent of all asphalt in our roads is reclaimed asphalt pavement. We are continuing to find methodologies where we attempt to increase that twenty percent to forty percent. There have been some instances where that has occurred. One on Old Cleveland Road, another example in Cannon Hill and another example in Capera as we are attempting to get the reclaimed asphalt to higher percentages. The reason that it is at those levels is because asphalt does deteriorate. The quality that is used in the road deteriorates over time. And therefore, to get above twenty percent, we have to provide an additive to the asphalt mix to make it more malleable and for it to take better and for it to form the road surface in a, in a way that's more usable and more in line with the standards that we expect. We understand for every kilometer of road, the bitumen modifier that I was just discussing can reduce carbon emissions by thirty percent, save four hundred and eighty-one tonnes of carbon, recycle eighty thousand plastic bands, bags, I should say, eighty thousand of plastic bags and eighteen thousand units of toner powder and from printer cartridges. So as you can hear, I've gone over a whole range of things that we reuse, whether it be rubber tyre. Well, you may learn something, Counselor Murphy, if you. We use rubber tyre. We use toner ink. We use reclaimed asphalt, among many other things. Glass bottles are all used to try and make our road surfaces and our concrete paths more sustainable. Our carbon channel and a whole range of things to make sure that we only use what's necessary and we look for ways to continue to innovate and continue to be more sustainable.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. I put the motion before us. The Infrastructure Committee Report, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Counselor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report, please.
Mister Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Meeting held on Tuesday, the sixteenth of August, twenty twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Allen and seconded by Counselor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Meeting dated Tuesday, sixteen August, twenty twenty-two be adopted. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Chair. In last week's committee presentation, we were provided with an update on the Maruka War Workers' housing estate. The estate was built in nineteen forty-four, forty-five period, and it's the only large-scale, fully planned housing estate for war workers in Queensland. The estate was recognised as having heritage significance, being unique in Australia and a highly intact example of a war worker's housing estate, representing the contribution of civilian war workers to the war effort. It comprises a hundred and eighty properties, of which a hundred and sixty-three contain an original cottage. The proposed temporary local planning instrument will provide interim protection to the estate while the city plan heritage overlay is amended. Specific guidance has been provided regarding the existing cottages and their setting, extensions and subdivisions, with consideration given to balancing modern living with conserving the heritage values. Some of the requirements include retaining the front yard open space, rear extensions within the set building envelope, no demolition or relocation of the cottages, compatible new construction for new builds. Outbuildings are to be located to the side and rear, including sheds, and also compatible fence designs to maintain consistency. The TLPI was adopted by council on the second of August, twenty twenty-two, and approval from the Queensland Government Minister is due on the second of September, twenty twenty-two. A major amendment to the city plan will be included to ensure the estate is captured in our heritage overlay. Letter providing supporting information will be provided to all property owners within the state. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Counselor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. And I rise to, I'd just say a few words on this. The Maruka War Workers' estate was or has been previously protected under the city plan. So this is just an additional layer of protection. It's sort of sold that this council was actually protecting it. It was already protected and it had been protected under a Labor administration. So this layer, I welcome this layer of protection. I think it's good. I think it gives people certainty about how they can extend these houses. But in speaking to council officers, the advice is we, we seek to protect areas of housing, character housing, because it offers something to the city. But in the plan, as it's changed over the years, we moved from a whole area down to three houses together, which is called a street view, down to now individual houses.
A point of order, Mister Chair. I think you'll find these comments.
So excuse me, Counselor Allen. Make, your point of order is?
I think you'll find that the points that Counselor Griffiths is touching upon aren't reflected in this particular committee presentation.
So your point of order is about relevance?
I knew this. So tomorrow night, I'm having a meeting with residents and we're going to discuss this, we're going to discuss this Maruka War Workers'.
Counselor.
We're going to have a meeting of residents and then they want to hold a public meeting. I'll be sure to invite you, Counselor Adams, but more so, I want to see the mayor there. We'll hold a public meeting so that residents can for sure, for sure, have the opportunity to tell the administration about character homes and how important they are in Maruka. And I understand that the LMP voted to protect these character homes, but there's two hundred character homes that they're proposing to remove protection from. Two hundred character homes you're proposing to remove protection from. And residents have a right to express to you that it would be very hypocritical to protect one area of the ward and then remove protection from character homes in another area of the ward. So I look forward, I look forward to meeting with those residents and talking about this meeting today. And I can even in time direct them to the video of this meeting. But this is really important for the local community. The administration has jumped on it and I think it's good. We support it. In fact, every councillor in the place supported it. But we should have a council in this place that is genuinely concerned about protecting character homes across the city, not just in large areas, but also individually as well. And that's what I'm clearly saying here. That's my position and that's my position in Maruka, Salisbury and Nathan as well. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Look, just to try and clarify the, the point that Counselor Griffith is making, there are two hundred character homes that are part of a, a number of areas that are currently captured in the draft strategy that are under investigation. And this sort of notion that, you know, the two hundred homes are automatically going to be wiped out. And it, it's just not accurate. I just repeat that they are part of a, an era. I just repeat that they are part of an area that's in, or under investigation. Councillor Cassidy last week raised the issue of, you know, these homes being, you know, destroyed and demolished. I just think it's premature to make those statements without recognising and letting the community know that they're actually in areas for investigation. And to make the leap to this notion that they're going to be destroyed is, as I said, it's premature and it's inaccurate.
Councillor Griffiths, you're raising a point of order?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask the councillor a question.
Councillor Allen, will you answer a question? No?
I think you won't.
Have you concluded? We now move to the vote on the City Planning, Suburban Renewal Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment.
Excuse me.
Sorry, it's just, can I just check, I want to take clause B for voting.
Let's get to the report first.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you can do whatever you like, or up to a point. Councillor Davis, please, the report.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday 16th August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 16 August 2022 be adopted. Is there any debate? Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, can I just move, Seri Adam, for clause B for voting?
Seri Adam, clause B for voting, sure. Okay, councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week's committee presentation showcased council's three environment centres where we are delivering an experience for residents that builds connection to the environment and looks to drive behavioural change. Over the past year, 831 activity events were delivered at the centres with a 100% participant satisfaction rate, with more than 121 visitors taking the time to visit Boondle Wetlands, Downfall Creek and Carrawatha Forest. The environment education offices at each centre work with local schools to engage children in nature-based learning experiences and environmental educational activities in line with their school's curriculum. In fact, the programme is on track to deliver 400 lessons to more than 10,000 students over the next year. For youngest children, bushkindy activities in the Creek Neighbours program educate kindergarten-aged children about their local environment importance and the importance of caring for Brisbane's creeks and aquatic ecosystems. The centres also run a volunteer program which brings together diverse groups of residents who help build community and deliver greater services for visitors. And these include activities like guided walks, bird watching for beginners, and assisting, of course, with bushkindy activities. We did hear a lovely story that during the COVID lockdown, centre volunteers came together to create crafting activity kits using upsiled and recycled materials and natural materials so that that could be delivered to local families. It's a wonderful program, and it too had a 100% participant satisfaction rate. Mr Chair, I'm very lucky to have the Downfall Creek Bushland Centre in the McDowell Ward with almost 25,000 visitors coming along last year. It's nestled in the Raven Street Reserve, which offers accessible bushland walking trails and bikeways, with the centre boasting a new playground, which my grandchildren give a rating of 10 out of 10 to, a community composting hub and free native plants nursery. Mr Chair, each of the centres has its own unique look and feel, so residents can enjoy quite different experiences at each location. I know that our very passionate environment education officers are always very excited to welcome visitors, to enjoy our natural reserves and to encourage positive environmental outcomes. Item B is a petition of 117 signatures requesting council install wildlife fencing along Boundary and Pine Mountain Road at Whites Hill Reserve. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there further debate on this report? Councillor Griffiths.
Sorry, yes. Thank you, Mr Chair. So I'll rise to speak on both these issues. Clause A is the environmental centre's presentation. Welcome the environmental centres. They're obviously doing great work in the city. As I've raised in this chamber before, we could have another environmental centre if we worked with Griffith University. They are keen to work with us, particularly on weekends. They have a healthy population and a growing population of koalas, seven kilometres from the city, they're accessible, and it would, it just makes sense. I, as the local councillor, will continue to work with them on doing this. In relation to the petition, I was surprised neither of the councillors got up in relation to this petition. We won't be supporting this petition. I was informed today, I asked for the stats of the number of deaths of koalas on this section of road, and was told there's been 20 deaths of koalas in five years. Now, obviously, there's going to be a lot more if you go back further in time. While I drive along this road frequently, there's a few things I don't understand. I don't understand why we haven't reduced the speed limit along this section of road. It's currently 70K. I know through Tui Forest, where we have similar issues, the speed limit's gone down to 60. And if you look at the practice of Griffith University, they actually have koala season where they have a lower speed limit throughout the university to stop death of wildlife. So I'm just saying, I don't think there's a lot of creativity in this response. I understand that I have seen a big log sort of structure built over the road so the koalas can go up, and there's a small section of fencing to capture the koalas to direct them up and over. In speaking to people who know a lot more about this than me, they are saying we're capturing the koalas in this section, allowing them to cross the road safely, but then essentially they go into an urban footprint. So I'm just wondering what sort of street tree planting we're doing, what sort of remediation we're doing. If we're saying it's okay for our koala population to move through this forest, what are we doing? And I know, I know with my, I see councillor, she wants to speak up, but she had a chance. In, in around Tui Forest, what we've done is we've worked very closely with the asset services, whatever they were called previously, and we actually undertook significant street tree plantings around the suburbs that had joined Tui Forest native street tree planting to get a better outcome for the wildlife moving in and out of the forest. So my concern here is that we aren't extending this fencing right along the road. We've got traffic travelling, and a lot of traffic travelling at 70 kilometres an hour. We know we've had 20 deaths. We've fenced a small section of the road. Why aren't we fencing the whole section of the road? And I have to say, from, from what I've done and what I've funded with the local groups in Tui Forest, we got main roads to do wildlife fencing along part of the South East Freeway. There was also a large section of Tui Forest that wasn't covered by this fencing. So I paid $80,000 out of my trust fund to get that fencing done. And I would put it to the two councillors who are here, why don't you put some money towards fencing here to stop these deaths or to redirect the wildlife back into the forest? And that's the way it's been presented to me by experts, is that you actually try and harness the wildlife and push it back into the forest. There's not many options for where it can go, and I just think it's disappointing that this is the, this is the response we're giving back to the community. So no, we won't be supporting it. We think so much more can be done.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And I rise to speak on item B, and I have to say, there is just one thing I agree with councillor Griffiths, is that he often speaks to people that know a lot more about this than him. And that is the whole point. The experts have looked at this, and unfortunately, although thoroughly supported at the time by councillor Cunningham and myself, because this is our Boundary Road by name and by nature, that this is, was not suitable for fencing along this road. Because fencing is used, as it is used in Tui Forest, as it is used along the areas there heading towards Griffith University and many other places across the city. Fencing is used to funnel the animals to a safe crossing point, usually under the road. We've done it at Dorrington Creek, councillor Murphy isn't here, but we've done it at Dorrington Creek as well, and we built the furniture under the road as well for them to cross there. There is no safe crossing point on Boundary Road. It doesn't go under, it dips, the road dips down, there is no underpass. There is nowhere for the animals to safely pass once they are trapped by that fence. And speaking to people that know a lot more about this than councillor Griffiths and myself and the Chair, the experts have very clearly said no safe crossing point, and all you would do, as it says in the paragraph here, very clearly, if the councillor for Maruka would read, is that you will just trap the wildlife, koalas and everything else, and they will not be able to get to where they need to go. They will be trapped there because it doesn't lead to a safe crossing point in any point. So what was done, thank you very much, with the support of the federal government, was to design a bespoke, first-of-its-kind koala crossing over the road, where we know the majority of those hits that we saw over the last five years have occurred, and that's higher up, near the reservoir, away from where the lights of the Whites Hill Reserve are, out of the dog-off-leash area, but they do love that area at night time as well. But closer up to where they do do the crossings and where we've seen the majority of the hits, so that they can get up and over the road. And there is fencing there that, just why the other fencing doesn't work, this fencing funnels them to the, it's not a log, it is actually a very strong steel structure that is covered with wood, so the koalas think that it's a tree, which is absolutely gorgeous. And then it's a basket structure over the top of the road, which then can help the koalas get across to where they go on the other side of the road. I had the great pleasure of running into one of my residents, not running into them, Kowisara's at our mobile office the other day, councillor Cunningham, who said they had actually seen a koala crossing across the basket the other night as they were driving past, but because they were moving, they didn't think to stop and take a photo of it, but they said it was absolutely fantastic, which segues nicely to the moving on the road. Again, something else I agree with councillor Griffiths, or two councillor Griffiths is a bit of a record. Would love to see the roads, the speed of this road reduced. Would love to see the speed of this road reduced. We are trying again, we are working. It's been to the speed limit review, and this is the one I was specifically referring to when I spoke earlier about speed limit review, and to the committee as well. Even going to try now to see if we can get it reduced during the day, during the evening, like they do out at Gumdale, where they reduce it at night time. So people travelling feel comfortable at 70 during the day, because it is at night that they start moving. But we recognise that this is a highly sensitive areas for koala. Something that I am proud of is we've got a lot of koalas in my area. I'm not proud that we're the triangle of death, as we might have been called in the Quest newspapers the other day. But this area, this vitally important area that councillor Griffiths believes strongly should have fencing for the number of koalas, is less than two kilometres from Carrara Street that we bought as a reserve for the koalas as they move through the biodiversity corridor. So councillor Griffiths, you can't have it both ways. You can't claim that there was no koalas two kilometres away and then claim we're not doing enough for the koalas. Not to mention the local state member, who just gave an award to the Chair of the Magravat Townhouse Group Against Development for the work in protecting koalas in Carrara Street by forcing council to buy the land. Corinne has said thank you for the land that we bought at Carrara Street. Maybe councillor Griffiths needs to speak to his federal mates, sorry, his state mates. And I'd like him to, because if he could convince Minister Bailey to drop the speed limit on Boundary Road, we would be very, very happy. I want to thank the council team and the federal government for the work they've done on the bridge. My area has five wildlife awareness monitors. That's how many koalas we have crossing on roads to make sure that people slow down through this breeding season. As I said, very proud of the number of koalas that have been growing and have been expanding in the area, but we need to make sure that we are doing more, and we are doing the right thing, followed by the right advice by the experts. And to the point about planting, yes, they do go over to an urban area. We understand that. It's been urbanised for decades. But the Finger Gullies Habitat Group, that I know councillor Cunningham spends a lot of time with, plants every single week through those finger gullies that reach down into Boundary Road, wildlife habitat and flora for the animals, not just the koalas, in that extremely important biodiversity corridor through Magravat East, Holland Park, and across to Holland Park West. And I support the petition in the chamber.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further speakers? Councillor Davis? No? We now move to the vote on this report, but in Seri Adam, so item A. All in favour of item A, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Item B, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. We now move on to the City Standards Committee report, please. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chair.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 16 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. Firstly, can I just start by thanking councillor Toomey and especially the Lord Mayor for allowing me to take off at the last minute last week. Those of us who get that one o'clock in the morning phone call will know that it's not the best thing to happen. Unfortunately, my mother-in-law passed away very, very unexpectedly, so I had to fly back for the funeral, and councillor Toomey very ably stepped up into my role for me, and I really appreciate that. And of course, I, yeah, and I did, I did come back with Kiwi cooties, so, yeah, which is the reason I'm wearing a mask. Also, the reason I've been leaving the chamber, I know councillor Griffiths was questioning why I wasn't in the chamber. I thought it was prudent to leave rather than interrupt everyone's speeches with multiple coughing fits, but potentially next time I'll just stay here and cough a lung up in the chambers. So the committee presentation that I so sadly missed was on the rodent dog inspection program. I know everyone loves the dogs. I know there's a few chairs in the chamber who like to claim the dogs as their own. So it's always a fight on who owns the dogs, but basically, it's my officers who take them home and look after them, so I'm claiming them. Lord Mayor met Rosie recently, the new puppy that has just joined the team. Unfortunately, we did lose one of our dogs, Emmy, recently, died of natural causes. Our officers who live with the dogs, or shall I say, the dogs live with the officers potentially, love those dogs, and they are a much part of the family. So it's always very sad when something like that happens. But Rosie's doing very, very well in her training, and I also want to thank everyone for that and the officers. Also, just wanted to add the comment that councillor Wines talked about all the stuff that we add to the asphalt and mentioned rubber. Can I just make the comment that it does not make the road any bouncier by adding rubber to the asphalt? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. We now move to the vote on the City Standards Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday 16 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And before moving to the committee report, I just want to talk about a few things that have happened in the last week. And some of these are really important in terms of the wonderful Brisbane community. One of the first things that both councillor Allen and I attended was the Northgate and Spring Hill Local Ambulance Committee AGM. And can I just say that these people do the most amazing job as volunteers, and Dee Weston has been doing that job for a very, very, very long time. And it was great to hear that they are still supporting our wonderful ambulance workers. And it was something that I thought was worth mentioning here today, because I don't think people generally realise that there is local ambulance committees out there. And so I urge all councillors, if they have one in their area, to support them. I also attended the Vietnam Veterans Day on Thursday the 18th of August, and it again was a wonderful opportunity, I think, for us to remember the Vietnam veterans and some of the difficulties that they had when they did return from active duty. And some of the stories that we heard at the remembrance service were very moving. I was delighted to support Jenny Gregory, who's the president of War Widows, and Jenny gave a very moving speech and talked about the fact that it's not just the serving officers, but the families of those officers, and in her case, some of the War Widows that they support so magnificently. I then attended a photographic exhibition for my journey, which was one of the activities that happened as a result of our Pathways Out of Homelessness grants, and one that was. that happened as a result of our Pathways Out of Homelessness grants and one that we provided to Fiona Terry and Mission Australia for women over 55 who are at risk of homelessness. And I think that it's worth mentioning to the chamber that we have over 700 women over 55 who are homeless in Greater Brisbane. And this is one of the reasons why the Lord Mayor has been calling on the federal government to turn the former coronavirus quarantine facility at Pinkham Bar into a crisis accommodation for homeless women. These are often quite hidden women because they're not really part of any group and that's why this particular grant was so important and why the photographic exhibition was amazing to see the journey that these women had been on. So it really is something that I think that the Shrinna Council was very proud to support these women on that journey and will continue to do so. On Friday, I attended the Gold Star and Little Star event at my local library at New Farm. And can I just say, I know that each and every councillor in this chamber just loves those events and we can understand why. We had such excitement, we had a cake and every, you know, every year those cakes just get bigger and bigger, but I can tell you that most of it disappeared by the end of the afternoon. So it was a fantastic event. I really want to thank all of our librarians who just love these programmes and do such a great job of encouraging our young people to enjoy the reading and to sort of move on their pathway to reading. On Friday night, I also attended the Queensland Symphony Orchestra's 75th Birthday Concert. And again, what a great milestone for a fantastic organisation that provides so much enjoyment to the people of Brisbane. I also attended on Saturday an art exhibition with my local rotary club at my local church. And again, I, I sort of reflected on the fact that this is what Brisbane is all about. We had the local church providing a space for some of our artists who are in the more vulnerable category. The artists were just so thrilled that their work was on display. We had lots of locals coming in off the street to talk to everyone and it really was fantastic to see that coming together of the community. And finally, on Sunday, I attended the World Refugee Day Celebration at Le Bois Theatre, which again was called Our Journey. And once again, a great opportunity to see the wonderful communities that have made Brisbane home. And so I just wanted to reflect today a lot on the community part of my portfolio and but to also let you know that the nighttime economy is alive and well and the Brisbane Fashion Festival will be making sure of that in the next week. So thank you, Brisbane Fashion Festival, for what you do. Turning to the report, we had a wonderful report on the Cube Effect. And look, I'm just so proud of this programme and you've heard me talk about it in the chamber before, but it was launched in 2015 and it's had 188 participants over the past eight years. It just gets better and better every year. And I just want to share with the chamber a comment that was made by Sahara Herald, who was a mentor for the Cube Effect this year and worked very closely with the group NXT, who won the opportunity to perform at Splendor in the Grass. It might have been a little damp for them, but that was their prize. And she was so moved by her time of working with them and with Moondust Merchants, who are our producers, that she provided feedback on the positive impact that the Cube Effect has had on the current ones, but also to comment that in her day, that just didn't exist. And so it was a very moving sort of comment that she made to us. And I think that it's fantastic to see that this is working so well. So the 2023 programme will run from November 2022 to June 2023 and it's going to, the Cube Effect 2023 awards will be held at the Brisbane Powerhouse in June-July 2023. I know that all of you have received some information about that, so if you can encourage any of your emerging artists to participate, we know that it's a fantastic experience for everyone concerned and I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Is there any further debate? No further debate. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of August 2022 be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday 16 August 2022 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Our committee presentation last week was from the Human Resources Branch about our Communities of Inclusion. The Communities of Inclusion were established in 2019 as an action from our Inclusion Blueprint. The Blueprint focuses on inclusive opportunities so that everyone gets to the starting line, an inclusive environment where employees can bring their whole selves to work, inclusive development to maximise individual and team potential, and inclusive leadership to drive outcomes through diversity. Our Communities of Inclusion bring together employees who share a passion for diversity and inclusion to champion messaging about the diverse group that they represent and to bring forward the voice of lived experience. We have five communities of inclusion in council. They are River City Pride, Women in STEM Trades and Leadership, Cultural and Linguistically Diverse, Brizzability and One Mob. We heard some of the achievements of each of these groups in the presentation, as well as some really moving testimonials from members. I thank the council officers who are part of these groups for their continued efforts, not only for being dedicated to a better Brisbane, but also being dedicated to creating positive social change in our community and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any debate? Councillor Strug.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. And my rights to speak on the presentation we received at the committee meeting and in regards to community inclusion, or I sort of coined the phrase a little bit diversity of inclusion or inclusion of diversity, whichever way you want to say it. Now, it was a great presentation because it informed me, which I wasn't aware of, and I checked with my, my, my team back out at the ward office as well afterwards, that this programme, which is, seems to be an internal programme, which is fine, it's, which is very helpful, of course, to people once they're working for Brisbane City Council or being interviewed for a job for Brisbane City Council to be told about the programme. But of course, the general public doesn't or isn't aware because we don't actually put it out into the public domain. And so, but the chair has covered off on, of course, those, those communities of inclusion, she read through them, but, but there's also that blueprint, which I think is quite important too, the inclusion blueprint, which includes inclusive opportunities, inclusive environment, inclusive development and a very important one, of course, inclusive leadership. And so, you know, I can, I can't speak highly enough of the, of the programme. I think we should let the general public know that this is what we're, what programme is internal within Brisbane City Council to support those new employees and established employees, to let them know that we really appreciate the diversity of the, of the various cultural communities that make up this great city, that, and those, those that are working for us have a happy place to come to work and knowing that they're going to be appreciated. So I made a suggestion, I'll just put it on the record, I just made, I made a suggestion that maybe we have a diversity and inclusive day, where maybe we, maybe use some of our advertising money, which was quite eye-watering in those, the, on the, on the questions on others that came back, $6 million, whatever it is, but maybe we use some of that money to let people know of the great programme that is currently underway and has been for some years within the, within the workforce of Brisbane City Council. I think we would do ourselves a lot of favour and we would probably attract a lot, a lot of people, a lot of good people, a lot of good employees, right? And once they know that they will be appreciated, once they start working for us. So maybe we can, maybe do that day, maybe out on, at Brisbane Square, King George Square, and work out or work with our council officers to roll up a plan and an event. We have the venue, King George Square, would be a great public space to roll that out for, for a day, just to let the general public know what this programme is all about. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Cunningham, summing up. Now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, petitions. Are there any petitions? No petitions for the second week running. General business. Are there any statements required as a result of an officer, the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? No one rising to their feet. Are there any matters of general business? Oh. I see you councillor Mac, no, no, I see you councillor Mac, I was pretending not to.
Thanks, Chair. As it's Tuesday, I'm just going to give you a two-minute Tuesday quick ward update. The good news is that it's going to be limited to just two topics. The first of all, the first topic is to talk about some news that's doing the rounds on social media, and that is that the state government is reconsidering its position on placing the new primary school for the inner west at the Tuwong Bowls Club. As you know, Chair, that is owned by Brisbane City Council and has faced some stiff opposition from local residents who are against that site being used. If it's true and the minister, Grace Grace, is actually going to change the location, it's a great outcome for the residents around there who are concerned with flooding, impact on the bat colony, the impact from the sewage plant located next door and massive traffic implications. It's a great win, thank you councillor Adamant, it is a great win for the local area. And now we can go back, do some consultation on where the school should go, which should provide a better outcome. The second item I'd like to talk about is the Gold Star and Little Star awards. We have two libraries in Walter Taylor, we stole one off Paddington Ward. We have the Indrapilly Library and the Tuwong Library and we actually had so many kids at Tuwong that we had two ceremonies last Thursday and on Saturday, it was great to go along. There were so many keen kids along, came along and some of them had seven or eight different stars. We have Tuwong this weekend and I really look forward to it. And as councillor Howard said before, thank you to all of the wonderful librarians who participate, including Kylie, the convener at the Indrapilly Library, who dressed up as fantastic Mr Fox as part of Book Week.
Thank you. Further general business, councillor Strug.
Thank you, Chair. My rights to speak on a couple of events that's happened since we last met. The first was the Korean Independence Day event by our Korean seniors group that meet in the old Anala Hall in Anala. I hadn't actually interacted with this group before and I'm really sorry I hadn't because they're one of the most terrific, kind-hearted, generous, very hospitable groups that I've probably have come across in many a year. Their numbers are reasonable size, although the August 15th, of course, was their Independence Day, which is when we met. And there was a bit of sickness and things like that that still permeate through, through the senior community. So we had probably about half the cohort there for the event, which saw the, the new Korean council, council head of, head of Mission Bay, who was in attendance and gave us a, gave us a really good speech in Korean, but it was interpreted with one of the, with one of the seniors' help, so I was able to understand. Now, they, they talked about, of course, their rich culture and, and, and of course, I, you know, we appreciate, of course, that Korea, especially South Korea, of course, is a very industrious country. And, and we're so lucky to have that calibre of, of people that want to call Australia home because they're very hardworking, industrious people, but they're very kind, generous and very hospitable at the same time. What, what a great, what a great culture they are. I just want to thank President, President Pak for inviting me along. We were able to generate and donate a little bit of money to help them in their, for their event and some ongoing support as well for, for their regular meetings as well. Moving on, we also had the unveiling of some indigenous artwork, which was in the precinct of the Anala, the Anala Community House area, which is a Brisbane City Council building, by the way, that goes back many, many years, of course. And the artwork that was unveiled was by indigenous artist Terry Hill. And what, and what, what she did, I wish I could just show you a picture of what, what she actually accomplished. In the gar, in one of the gardens in the middle of the, in the middle of the precinct as well, they had removed down to the stump four trees. They weren't huge trees, they probably had a circumference, the trunk that was left probably had a circumference of around about 400 mils. And, and they were basically left there because if anyone knows, of course, to remove, to remove stumps out of a, out of a, out of a space, of course, almost costs more money to do that than it does to, to cut the tree out. But what she was able to do was to cover those four stumps in artwork that actually told a story. And, and when I looked at, when I looked at what she was able to accomplish with those four stumps, it was just quite amazing and it just gave me an idea that, you know, maybe, maybe some of those stumps that we do take out of the, out of the space where it makes sense, we could find, find an indigenous artist to do some artwork because most of those stumps will last for many, many, many years if looked after and, and it's just an opportunity to, to repurpose those stumps into indigenous artwork. In this case, it's, they, there was four stories, four stumps, four stories. So I encourage you to, if you're ever out in Anala area, to have a look at Anala Community House and what they've been able to accomplish there in that, in their garden. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further general business, councillor Landers.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just rise to encourage people to support Cancer Council Queensland Daffodil Day on Thursday the 25th of August. This appeal raises funds for medical research into cancer and the cancer, and cancer treatment. Very few people have not been impacted by cancer, whether it be their own experience or someone they, they know. Research to improve prevention, detection and early detection and treatment has also improved the lives of so many with the Cancer Council funding these life-changing breakthroughs over the years. I myself have had my own experience with melanoma and early detection and treatment has assisted me. My own father, who did pass away from lymphoma, but because of early detection and treatment, had five very good years. Just recently, three weeks ago, I attended the funeral of a very good friend's sister, Lisa, who had a battle with cancer, ovarian cancer for 15 years, but because of that medical research and the treatment, had a very full and beautiful life. My own nephew was two years when he had leukaemia and because of the treatment, he is a survivor and he now celebrates his 25th birthday this year. I wanted to talk about Brackenridge State School. They are great supporters of Cancer Council every year and just last week had a cent auction with raffles and auction and they raised $9,117. They are the highest on the leaderboard for schools and the nearest to them was a school who raised $500. They were well supported by an incredible team of volunteers led by Amy Atwood and incredible community support with donations of raffles. And then all of the community, school parents came together and had a beautiful day listening to the students doing musical performances and, and all got into the spirit of raising that money. So I think it was an incredible effort by a very small school in my community. Of course, as the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, we are supporting by lighting our assets yellow for Daffodil Day. And I do encourage everyone to help by purchasing daffodils on Thursday. The reason it's a daffodil is because it's the first flower of spring and daffodils have become a symbol of hope. So you can do your bid on Thursday by buying a daffodil and know that you are or will bring hope to many people. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Landers. Further speakers, councillor Cumming.
Thank you. I probably should have made this speech last week, but I referred to the fawning speech at the end of last week's councillor but I referred to the fawning speech at the end of last week's council meeting by Doughboy councillor Lisa Atwood. She heralded councillor Murphy as being Mr Doughboy for a decade. She quoted staff who had worked or continued to work for councillor Murphy. Obviously, she could not find any member of the general public to endorse councillor Murphy. But the most glaring weakness in councillor Atwood's speech was that councillor Murphy had walked out and deserted Doughboy. Councillor Murphy thought he might lose the marginal ward of Doughboy, so he deserted Doughboy and stood for the much safer ward of Chandler, which included the LNP strongholds of Carandale and Wakely at the time. Councillor Murphy had no loyalty to Doughboy Ward and a fawning speech given-
Excuse me, councillor Cumming, excuse me for a moment. Point of order, councillor.
Would the councillor take a question?
No, no, no. Just disrupt my flow. No loyalty to Doughboy Ward and a fawning speech given the expiry of ten years since he first elected was quite pathetic. Anyhow, but seeing councillor Landers mention charity, I would highlight the efforts of the Quota Club of Winham and Manley, a group of fifteen ladies who work extremely hard and their main fundraising event each year is the Hear and Say Evening that they run. And when they had it last Saturday, they raised almost fifteen thousand dollars. They get donated enormous amount of items, mainly with a sporting theme, jerseys and goodness knows what. They have an auctioneer who works as a volunteer, does a tremendous job and selling their goods and have raffles galore. And over the years, they've raised over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Hear and Say Organisation over a decade. And they do a tremendous job for such a small group of women. I'd like to congratulate them for their efforts.
Thank you. Any further general business? No further general business. I declare the meeting closed.